Welcome to tonight's meeting. So could everybody stand for Vice President is going to say the, Pete Lusher is going to say the prayer and then we're going to do the presentation, double flag.
Thank you.
Will you join me in prayer? Almighty God, as we move into the autumn season on the eastern shore, we are reminded of your Psalmist's words. The heavens are telling the glory of God and the firmament proclaims his handiwork. Day to day pours forth speech and night to night declares knowledge. There is no speech nor are there words. Their voice is not heard, yet their voice goes out through all the earth and their words to the ends of the world. But who can detect their own errors? Clear us from our hidden faults. Keep your servants also from proud thoughts. Do not let them have dominion over us. Let the words of our mouths and the meditation of our hearts be acceptable to you, O Lord, our rock and redeemer. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Did a good job on that. Appreciate that. Okay, let's see what tonight's agenda is going to bring us tonight. So the council has an agenda for September 28th before us. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. I forgot to mention that Mr. Pat is actually on the phone. He's up here. So Corey, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you loud and clear, so thank you.
Okay, okay, I appreciate it. So you know, if you need something, we're here. If you just holler if you need us, okay?
Oh dear, thanks.
Okay, now let's go over the minutes. August 24th and September 14th, council has had a chance to review the 24th and the 14th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, dispersments are next for September 21st and 28th. Council has had a chance to see the dispersments for the 21st and 28th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, the first presentation of a proclamation tonight is, as Captain Murray, would he come up?
And Mr. Kokolos.
Yeah, Mr. Kokolos, if you'd come on up, that'd be great. Welcome, guys.
Good to be here.
Terry, I'll hand it over there to you for a little bit. Do you want anybody else to come up?
No, I know that Captain Murray's family is there. I'm gonna make sure that they were.
Yeah, absolutely. Come on in. Yep. Okay, I'm gonna open the floor to you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the county council. For the record, I'm Terry Kokolos and I'm here to celebrate a wonderful career by Captain Everett Murray, seated directly to my right. He has done so much for this department through the years, the transitions. He has seen so many people come and go, and that's on both sides of the bars. Captain Murray had a sterling career in the U.S. Marine Corps and brought his talents, structure, and ability to persevere and be creative to the Department of Corrections. And I say that because he has mentored so many people that have the same qualities that he has. So it's a pleasure for me to be here tonight to celebrate him, even though I'm sorry to see him go.
Sure you are.
So I would like to turn it over to Captain Murray.
Go ahead, Captain Murray. You've been waiting for this for a long time.
Yes, yeah, I think 27 years of incarceration is enough.
Yeah, I think so, yeah, yeah.
But I've really enjoyed my career. I've had a good run. I've enjoyed working with the people that I've worked with, but I think it's now time for me to move on so I can enjoy the next 50 years of my life.
Yes, sir. Good for you. Good for you. Okay, council, I'm gonna open it up. Ms. Price?
Do you want to have a read of proclamation first?
Yes, that would be great.
Proclamation in honor of Captain Everett D. Murray. Whereas Everett D. Murray began his career as a corrections professional with Talbot County on December 21st, 1993, and during his career rose to the ranks to achieve the rank of captain through hard work in promoting innovations in the ever-changing field of corrections. And whereas, while employed by Talbot County, Captain Murray served in specialized areas, spending many years managing security operations, most recently administrative operations. He was instrumental in the development of central booking along with his assignment as administrator for criminal history checks of all new arrivals through transmittal of live scanned fingerprints. He was also tasked with planning, scheduling, and implementation of all in-service training requirements mandated by the Maryland Police and Correctional Training Commission. And whereas, having chosen September 30th, 2021, as his official date of retirement, Captain Murray will have served 27 years and nine months in the corrections profession and will truly be nixed. Now therefore, we, the county council of Talbot County, do hereby congratulate Captain Everett D. Murray on his retirement, thank him for the many contributions he made over the past 27-plus years to the safety of our community and to the quality of life enjoyed by all residents of and visitors to Talbot County, and offer him best wishes for a long and happy retirement. Given under our hands in the great seal of Talbot County this 28th day of September in the year of our Lord 2021.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there a motion to second to approve this proclamation?
So moved.
Second. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Okay, so do you want to go down and present it? That'd be great.
You want to join me?
Yeah. Come on up. Yeah.
You're fine. You're gonna get your picture taken. Congratulations.
Don't get off your day job, Terry. Congratulations.
I just want to thank my family for being here also.
We just want to say a couple more words to you.
Okay. Not done yet.
Yeah? We're not done yet. We got praise. Okay, DeVilleo?
27 years is fantastically, that's incredible career to stay in one place and under a couple different directors. I greatly appreciate your commitment to the community. This is a detention center here and it's part of the rehabilitation process. Your commitment for that long shows a dedication to rehabilitating and maintaining Talbot County. These are a lot of individuals who made a mistake one time, a drug-related offense that just need to get back into society and get back to where they were corrected, and you've made a tremendous impact on their lives. So I want to thank you for that after being in there, seeing the facility, getting the tour, and seeing all that you do to keep them safe and to rehabilitate them. It's incredible. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. DeVilleo.
Captain Murray, when the courts remove somebody from society and put them in your care, you are responsible for their every need and their safety. And what you have done for their safety and consequently for our safety over all those years is not to be understated. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Lusher. Ms. Price?
Well, I'm very honored to have been able to hand you that certificate. And in this day and age where people don't stay in jobs nearly as long to spend your entire career here with us, it's just a testament to your dedication and to your service, and especially in the field of public safety. I think it's even harder. It's a very draining thing, but I think, I'm hoping it was very rewarding for you. So I thank you very much for your service.
And I'll wrap it up. What's it feel like to be retired? Huh? You feel good?
Yeah, I feel free.
That's good, that's good, that's good. But we're all proud of you here, that's for sure.
But don't forget about me, Mr. Callahan.
You know what, I'm glad you said something there. Okay, I give you a minute here.
I'm outside.
Yeah, so I really appreciate your service years ago. Really appreciate that and all you've done for Talbot County, like council said. So we can't thank you enough for putting your heart into investing your career here. And we wish you the best, and whatever we can do to help you in the future, we're here for you. Yep, yep. Mr. Pat?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Callahan. Everett, I am so glad that we were able to talk this morning as I was entering the facility there, so I could give you congratulations on a job well done. You will be sorely missed. I know that the rest of the staff down there feels the same way that I do. You have been a fine example of what a correctional officer should be, the way that you've handled yourself, and the way that you, the professionalism that you've shown to your profession and dedication you've shown to Talbot County Department of Corrections cannot be understated. You know, we've lost some good people along the way through retirement, and that in the person of Harx Johnson and Leon Tillman, and now you. And of course, we also lost Ms. Weber, the former captain as well. Her name escapes me, I do apologize. But you know, you all have shown the example of what a professional correctional staff looks like, how it should operate, and I just want to say thank you and to you as you move on to your future endeavors. Wish you the very best. I think you said you're gonna be doing some driving down the road a bit?
A little bit.
A little bit.
Okay. Is that it, Mr. Pat?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, okay, well, thanks a lot, and we wish you the best, and we're always here for you. Okay. Okay. Ready for? Good. Yep. We're getting close. I'm just letting you guys come in, that's all. It's settled. Okay, okay, let's get started on the next one on the agenda here is a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Month. So Madam Secretary, could we put a proclamation into the record, please?
Proclamation, no matter what, you matter. Suicide Prevention Month, October 2021. Whereas in the United States, one person dies by suicide every 11 minutes and is the 10th leading cause of death overall. In Maryland, it's the third leading cause of death for individuals ages 10 to 34, the fourth leading cause of death for individuals ages 35 to 44. And even though most of these deaths are preventable, on average, one Marylander dies by suicide every 13 hours, with more Marylanders dying by suicide than by homicide every year. And whereas, 47,511 people in the United States, including 657 people in Maryland, died by suicide in 2019, with a single loss to suicide affecting an average of 115 people. And whereas, the 2019 Youth Risk Behavior Survey conducted by local school systems in conjunction with the CDC, revealed that at least one in five mid-shore teenagers ages 14 to 18 had seriously considered attempting suicide in the 12 months prior to the survey. 25% reported symptoms of depression, and rates of attempted suicide amongst mid-shore teens have risen 41% over the past decade. And whereas, many of those individuals who died never received effective behavioral health services for numerous reasons, including the difficulty of accessing the services of healthcare providers professionally trained to reduce suicide risk, the stigma of using behavioral health treatment, and the stigma associated with losing a loved one to suicide. And whereas, a Kaiser Family Foundation survey indicated that 45% of adults in the United States reported that their mental health has been negatively impacted due to worry and stress over the coronavirus, with the COVID-19 pandemic having far-reaching effects, including keeping people from seeking emergency care for suicidal thoughts, as evidenced by a 28% decrease in emergency room mental health visits and a 60% decrease in visits related to suicidal thoughts in the month after the stay-at-home order took effect. And whereas, For All Seasons Behavioral Health and Rape Crisis Center served 2,783 clients in fiscal year 2021, a 17% increase from the previous year. And that to help the increase, a total of 19 crisis appointments are now available weekly to clients in need, including same-day crisis appointments for people having suicidal thoughts, and the agency created the Ask, Listen, Share campaign, empowering all individuals to play a role in suicide prevention on the eastern shore. And whereas, the Governor's Commission on Suicide Prevention, dedicated to reducing the frequency of suicide attempts and deaths, and the pain of those affected by suicide through research projects, educational programs, and interventional and bereavement services, urges all Talbot County citizens to recognize suicide as a significant public health risk and to declare suicide prevention and mental health support a priority, and to support the development of accessible behavioral health services for all citizens of our county in an effort to reduce the risk of suicide and mental health challenges for people of all ages and backgrounds. Now therefore, we, the county council of Talbot County, do hereby declare the month of October as no matter what, you matter, Suicide Prevention Month, and urge all citizens to actively work toward the prevention of suicide and to reach out to one another and ask, are you okay? Listen without judgment, and share vital resources to promote an inclusive and mentally healthy community. Given under our hands in the great seal of Talbot County this 28th day of September in the year of our Lord 2021.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good job. Beth Ann, you want to come on up? Anybody wants to bring up to?
I want to stay in the lead.
Okay, okay. How are you?
I am good. How are you?
That's great.
Great to see you.
Yeah, good to see you too.
I just want to thank the council for having For All Seasons here today. September is the National Suicide Prevention Month across our country, and in working in conjunction with our Going Purple campaigns, we decided five years ago to make October no matter what you matter month in Talbot County. And you all, as council members, have been so supportive of all the work that we have done. This year is a special year for us. The campaign no matter what you matter started in 2017, when a group of teachers and administrators, county folks, mental health professionals, were able to go down and see the musical Dear Evan Hansen when it opened on Broadway in 2017. That is really where the no matter what you matter campaign came from. On the way back, on the bus ride, we were able to really think about the impact that that suicide theme within that musical could have, and that's where our campaign started. We're really excited to share with you that on Sunday, For All Seasons was able to work with some of our high school students, Ricky Vitanovic and E.J. Osterle, and we rented out the theater, and it was a way to give the students an opportunity to view now the movie Dear Evan Hansen that came out this week, and did a great talkback with our students about the importance of the Ask, Listen, and Share campaign. What we've seen through COVID and what we are continuing to see as suicide numbers rise and as folks who are experiencing mental health symptoms continue to rise, is the ability to be connected and to be able to be vulnerable enough to say, I'm not doing okay, is a conversation that if we do not continue to have, then the suicide numbers will not continue to do anything other than rise. And so this year, we're doing the campaign. Our new banners will be going up in the month of October, and it really encourages the community that everyone plays a role in suicide prevention. If we can send a text message, if we can pick up the phone, if we can check in with people, and not be in a space of so busy to get to the next meeting or so busy to get to the next class for our high school students, but to actually stop and say, Pete, how are you doing? And listening to the response that people give. And the number one message that I really want our council to continue to spread and to those that are watching tonight or here that are present, it's okay if you don't have the answer when you say to someone, how are you doing? And if they say to you, I'm not doing okay, it's okay to say something along the lines of, I'm not really, I don't really have the words. I'm not really sure what to say, but I'm so glad you shared with me and I want to help connect you. Because the goal that we have through this Ask, Listen, and Share campaign is that the questions are asked, people are taking the time to listen, and that we as community members continue to share the resources. As you heard in the proclamation, For All Seasons has 19 crisis appointments that we hold each week. Prior to the coronavirus, we only had 10, so we have almost doubled the number of crisis appointments. And I can tell you, as the CEO of the agency, those appointments are filled every week, and there are some times where we are asking our clinicians to put lunch on hold to get an additional person in on any given day. So I just want to say thank you to all of you for the work that you do, to the community, to our law enforcement, our emergency services, our fire department. It really is a collaborative effort. We cannot do this by ourselves. It is a community response that continues to move these numbers in a downward motion. And we really encourage folks this month to visit your local business community. We have over 30 businesses that are coming on board with us to celebrate the campaign and to help provide the funding that we need to continue to keep these crisis appointments available. And so just want to say thank you so much. And you know, Suicide Prevention Month across the nation is in September. Just because it's one month that celebrates it doesn't mean that the next month we forget about it. And so I encourage everyone to just continue to think through no matter what you matter, check in with people, and do Ask, Listen, and Share with everyone you see.
That's great. Thank you, Beth Ann. Madam Secretary, would you go ahead and, we'll make a motion to go ahead and approve, accept a proclamation?
I will, I will so move.
I'll second.
Okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Madam Secretary. Mr. Lusher, you want to present a proclamation? That'd be great.
I just want to thank the council for having For All Seasons here today. September is the National Suicide Prevention Month across our country, and in working in conjunction with our Going Purple campaigns, we decided five years ago to make October no matter what you matter month in Talbot County. And you all, as council members, have been so supportive of all the work that we have done. This year is a special year for us. The campaign no matter what you matter started in 2017, when a group of teachers and administrators, county folks, mental health professionals, were able to go down and see the musical Dear Evan Hansen when it opened on Broadway in 2017. That is really where the no matter what you matter campaign came from. On the way back, on the bus ride, we were able to really think about the impact that that suicide theme within that musical could have, and that's where our campaign started. We're really excited to share with you that on Sunday, For All Seasons was able to work with some of our high school students, Ricky Vitanovic and E.J. Osterle, and we rented out the theater, and it was a way to give the students an opportunity to view now the movie Dear Evan Hansen that came out this week, and did a great talkback with our students about the importance of the Ask, Listen, and Share campaign. What we've seen through COVID and what we are continuing to see as suicide numbers rise and as folks who are experiencing mental health symptoms continue to rise, is the ability to be connected and to be able to be vulnerable enough to say, I'm not doing okay, is a conversation that if we do not continue to have, then the suicide numbers will not continue to do anything other than rise. And so this year, we're doing the campaign. Our new banners will be going up in the month of October, and it really encourages the community that everyone plays a role in suicide prevention. If we can send a text message, if we can pick up the phone, if we can check in with people, and not be in a space of so busy to get to the next meeting or so busy to get to the next class for our high school students, but to actually stop and say, Pete, how are you doing? And listening to the response that people give. And the number one message that I really want our council to continue to spread and to those that are watching tonight or here that are present, it's okay if you don't have the answer when you say to someone, how are you doing? And if they say to you, I'm not doing okay, it's okay to say something along the lines of, I'm not really, I don't really have the words. I'm not really sure what to say, but I'm so glad you shared with me and I want to help connect you. Because the goal that we have through this Ask, Listen, and Share campaign is that the questions are asked, people are taking the time to listen, and that we as community members continue to share the resources.
As you heard in the proclamation, For All Seasons has 19 crisis appointments that we hold each week. Prior to the coronavirus, we only had 10, so we have almost doubled the number of crisis appointments. And I can tell you, as the CEO of the agency, those appointments are filled every week, and there are some times where we are asking our clinicians to put lunch on hold to get an additional person in on any given day. So I just want to say thank you to all of you for the work that you do, to the community, to our law enforcement, our emergency services, our fire department. It really is a collaborative effort. We cannot do this by ourselves. It is a community response that continues to move these numbers in a downward motion. And we really encourage folks this month to visit your local business community. We have over 30 businesses that are coming on board with us to celebrate the campaign and to help provide the funding that we need to continue to keep these crisis appointments available. And so just want to say thank you so much. And you know, Suicide Prevention Month across the nation is in September. Just because it's one month that celebrates it doesn't mean that the next month we forget about it. And so I encourage everyone to just continue to think through no matter what you matter, check in with people, and do Ask, Listen, and Share with everyone you see.
That's great. Thank you, Beth Ann. Madam Secretary, would you go ahead and, we'll make a motion to go ahead and approve, accept a proclamation?
I will, I will so move.
I'll second.
Okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Madam Secretary. Mr. Lusher, you want to present a proclamation? That'd be great. Mr. DeVilleo?
So it comes, it's no surprise to me that those appointments have doubled in the last year. The stress that I've seen on the community has greatly compounded. Financial stress on business owners, on employees, out of work, it's, things have been very difficult. And for you to have stepped up and to be able to, on this double capacity, I greatly appreciate that. It's incredibly difficult times right now, and I just hope that individual, anyone who's in need of help knows where to turn, and your organization's always been there for them. So if there was anything that we could do to increase your capacity so you could hold more, I would do that. I know that you'd probably triple the need is out there.
Yeah.
But I appreciate all the efforts that you're doing, and I know how hard your staff is working, while they're stressed out too, and dealing with difficult situations in their own lives, school and everything else that's going on. So thank you to them as well.
Thank you. I'll pass that on.
Thank you, Mr. DeVilleo. Mr. Lusher?
I was first touched by this, by suicide, when I was in ninth grade, a senior in our high school, and followed by two more, and that impact has long stayed with me. The work that you are doing is so important, and the need, as we've heard, is so great today. Thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Ms. Price?
I too have been touched by this. Fortunately, my friends survived, but getting help and recognizing the problems that lead to it are so critical. And it changes the people around that loved one, whether they are successful or not. It forever changes the people around them. I know I'll never be the same after having experienced that, even though they survived. So it's very personal for me as well, as I'm sure so many people like Mr. Lusher have been, have been touched by this. And so we're incredibly grateful for the work that you do on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Mr. Pat?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Callahan. Beth Ann, again, thanks so much for all that you do and your staff there at For All Seasons. And you all, even when you're not present before council on TV, you're still at work making sure that you're taking care of these people in their most vulnerable state when they're dealing with so much stress and conflict in their life. So to you and your staff, I just want to say thank you for being there on the front line, for being there on the wall, for helping people deal with these situations in their life, and hopefully to bring them to a very successful conclusion. So again, thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thanks. And I want to tell you, Beth Ann, a few weeks ago, when you, when we were over to the event underneath the, the tent there down, that event was, was it called ARC?
It was the 9/11 Remembrance Event.
Yeah, yeah. So you did an absolutely phenomenal job with your speech.
Thank you.
And that really, really touched a lot of people. I think Mr. Lusher was there. And it touched a lot of people, and we are really, really blessed to have you in Talbot County with running that program and all the people that you are helping. So I really personally want to thank you for all you're doing in Talbot County, that's for sure, and all the people that rely on you and your programs and stuff. So you know, I know, you know, like Mr. Lusher and Ms. Price, so I was touched too. I had my best friend commit suicide 17 years ago too, so when he was, when he, when you physically go in there and see somebody that's done that and have to carry them out, just like Ms. Price said, that changed your life forever.
Absolutely.
You know?
Absolutely.
So I feel for people like that, I really do. But you said it perfectly, please open up to people, because it's not that bad. People will listen to you, you can get help, but please don't do the worst thing that could happen.
Okay, thanks, Madam Secretary. Mr. Lesher, you would present a proclamation, that'd be great. Thank you. Bethany, can we just?
Yes.
Yep, that'd be great. Mr. DeVilleo?
So it comes, it's no surprise to me that those appointments have doubled in the last year. The stress that I've seen on the community is, it has greatly compounded. Financial stress on business owners, on employees, out of work, it's, things are, have been very difficult. And for you to have stepped up and to be able to, on this double capacity, I greatly appreciate that. It, it's incredibly difficult times right now, and I just hope that individual, anyone who's in need of help knows where to turn, and your organization's always been there for them. So if there was anything that we could do to increase your capacity so you could hold more, I would do that. I know that you'd probably triple the need is out there.
Yeah.
But I appreciate all the efforts that you're doing, and I know how hard your staff is working, while they're stressed out too, and dealing with difficult situations in their own lives, school and everything else that's going on. So thank you for, to them as well.
Thank you, I'll pass that on.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. DeVilleo. Mr. Lesher?
I was first touched by this, by suicide at, when I was in ninth grade, a senior in our high, our high school, and followed by, followed by two more, and that, that impact has long stayed with me. The work that you are doing is so important, and the need, as we've heard, is so great today. Thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Ms. Price?
I too have been touched by this. Fortunately, my friend survived, but getting help and recognizing the problems that lead to it are so critical. And it changes the people around that loved one, whether they are successful or not. It forever changes the people around them. I know I'll never be, be the same after, after having experienced that, even though they survived. So it's very personal for me as well, as I'm sure so many people like Mr. Lesher have been, have been touched by this. And so we're incredibly grateful for the work that you do on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Mr. Pack?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Callahan. Bethany, again, thanks so much for all that you do and your staff there at Four All Seasons. And you all, even when you're not present before council on TV, you're still at work making sure that you're taking care of these people in their most vulnerable state when they're dealing with so much stress and conflict in their life. So to you and your staff, I just want to say thank you for being there on the front line, for being there on the wall, for helping people deal with these situations in their life, and hope, and hopefully to bring them to a very successful conclusion. So again, thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thanks. And I want to tell you, Bethany, a few weeks ago, when you, when we were over to the event underneath the, the tent there down, and that event was, was it called Arc?
It was the 9/11 Remembrance Event.
Yeah, yeah. So you did an absolutely phenomenal job with your speech.
Thank you.
And that, and that really, really touched a lot of people. I think Mr. Lesher was there. And it touched a lot of people, and we are, we are really, really blessed to have you in Talbot County with, with running that program and all the people that you are helping. So I really personally want to thank you for, for all you're doing in Talbot County, that's for sure, and all the people that rely on you and your programs and stuff. So, you know, I know, you know, like Mr. Lesher and Ms. Price, so I was touched too. I had my best friend commit suicide 17 years ago too, so when he was, when he, when you, when you physically go in there and see somebody that's done that and have to carry them out, just like Ms. Price said, that changed your life forever.
Absolutely.
You know?
Absolutely.
So I feel for, for, for people like that, I really do. But you said it perfectly, please open up to people, because it's not that bad. People will listen to you, you can get help, but please don't do the worst thing that could happen. So it's, it's so many other avenues you could go and get help, so please don't do that and think about your loved ones. So thanks a lot for everything.
I just want to say thank you all for sharing your story, because I think one of the things that we know is that when people share our stor, when people share their stories, we recognize that we're not the only one who has gone through it. And I say time and again that we are all only one family member or friend away from a mental illness. And so I know that it is a personal story that you share tonight, and I just want to say, I so appreciate the, the kudos to the, the work that we are doing, but this could not be done without the 89 other people that show up every day and bring their hearts. And so I just want to also acknowledge the staff that stand side by side every day. So I just, thank you so much for sharing your stories.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Take care.
Appreciate it. Okay, everybody, everybody just kind of talk that away in your mind and make sure you practice every day, and you wake up in the morning and say a little prayer in how, how grateful it is to, to wake up in sunshine and be, and just look at the sky and thank the Lord, and how positive things can be. So let's just start practicing that. Okay, so Dr. McGuire. How are you?
Hello.
She's going to give us a little bit of update that there's, it's almost to an end, right?
You know, I always bring the good news, every time.
You've got one more week on it, right?
That's it. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for inviting me to give you an update today, and I did submit some slides.
Okay.
Oh, thank you. All right, perfect. So, um, thank you again for inviting me down to speak. It's been, uh, what, maybe a month and a half since I gave my last update, so I wanted to give an update primarily on, of course, COVID, but also some other things that are going on. So to start off with, where are we? So we have been in our Delta surge for a good, almost two months now, and, and we are seeing effects of Labor Day, of school starting currently. I like to always present our level of community transmission with COVID, and that is mathematically the total number of our cases in the past seven days per 100,000 people. And again, obviously, we have fewer than 100,000 people in Talbot County. But where we are as of today is 306. Any number above 100 is considered high by the CDC, and, and above 50 is substantial. And so that's the threshold that, of course, the CDC gives for recommending mask-wearing indoors by the general public. And, and so we, just to, you know, hearken back to July, we were there, we were low, we can get there again, but right now, we are feeling the significant effects of this Delta surge. And the maybe good news is that the rest of Maryland may be starting to see a plateau, certainly in the rest of the country, we're seeing a little bit of a plateau. Whether this can continue or not is difficult to guess, because we do have some other effects going on, especially, you know, the continuance of, of cases spreading in school. But we do tend to, in this county, follow the rest of the state by about three weeks or so, so I am hoping that in a few weeks, we will be able to decrease our numbers like the rest of the state may be seeing. Part of this is that our neighboring counties have really been hotspots, and by that I mean really Dorchester, Caroline, Wycomico, Somerset. And we were able to avoid some, some of the hotspot for a little bit this past month and a half, but it seems like that's catching up to us the past week or so. Currently, the whole state, except for two counties, is in this high transmission mode, and the counties that are, are not, they're in substantial, and that's Montgomery and Howard. And the reason I think that they are lower than the rest of the state is because their vaccination numbers are much ahead, are a lot farther ahead than every other county. They're really approaching the 70 or 75% of their entire population having been fully vaccinated against COVID, and I think they're, I think they're starting to see that benefit, that light at the end of the tunnel. And as, as more of, of the, of the population gets vaccinated, I'm really hoping that the rest of the counties follows suit. We are almost there. We are, we are third in our population in terms of, you know, fully vaccinated, but, but not quite there. So again, why is this, why is this surge happening? It's the Delta variant. I've mentioned this before. It's accounting for over 99% of the cases in Maryland right now. And again, the reason for that is because it is just that much more contagious, just spreading that much more fast, affecting everyone who it almost gets in its path. And so we are seeing, in this past month, we have had about 346 cases, and in the past week, 114 cases. And what we're seeing is a shift downward in terms of the ages that's being affected. So the, the number that's really significant this week is that 31% of our cases are in kids under age 12. And that figure was, that figure was much lower a few weeks ago. So even just about three, four weeks ago, the number of our cases in kids under 18 was only about 20%. And so now, certainly, it's about 37%. We're just seeing that. Now, part of this, I think, is just numerical in the sense that right now, kids are getting tested a lot because they're in school and they're getting quarantined and exposed. And so maybe in the summer, we just weren't seeing it as much in, in that age group. But there has been this significant population shift. This is consistent with the rest of the state, so in the past week, the, in the rest of Maryland, about 30% of new cases are in kids under age 18.
Dr. McGuire, real quick before you move on.
Sure.
But what's happening to them? I mean, they're, they're children, so when this first started happening, you know, the, we knew who was at risk, the elderly and the people that had the comorbidities, and those were the ones really getting sick. So the children who are testing positive, are they, are they severely sick, or what, what's typical for these children under 12 and 18?
Right. So, so the, the good news about in children, they do tend to have milder courses. However, what we've seen is that, so children are accounting for about 2% of hospitalizations. That doesn't seem like a lot, but really, in January, they were accounting for about 0.5% of hospitalizations. So that number has increased. They, children are, have the benefit of generally good health usually, and so, so we are not, and our numbers are very low locally, but we have had, you know, kids in the hospital, kids transferred, kids with chronic, you know, manifestations of COVID, and, and also some complications such as the multi-system inflammatory disorders. And so generally, yes, we aren't seeing the significantly high rates of death or hospitalization as we would in an older population, but it is extremely disruptive. And the problem is also, whenever you think about children, is you don't know the long-term effects. You know, there's always this kind of multi, multiplying factor of, we expect them to live for decades more, and we want to make sure that, you know, they're not unnecessarily exposed to something. And so, so you're right that they, they are not experiencing the, the high rates of death that we had seen in, in especially seniors, but, you know, I believe that a lot of the cases we're seeing, kids, are preventable, and that's something that, you know, we should focus on.
But if there's 68% of the cases, or, oh, 37 under, okay, 37% under age 18, 31% under age 12, that's not, that's not a total of 68, it's going to be a total of 37%. Is that right? On that slide? Go back one slide.
Um, so, so the, okay, yeah, so of the 114 cases in our, in the past week, yeah, 37% were under 18.
Okay, so it's not between ages 12 and 18?
No, 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 no. And, and actually, in the, in this past week, that number is 6%, that difference, the 12 to 18 is, is.
But if it's 37% of the cases and only 2% of the hospitalizations, that's hopefully considered a positive?
Yeah, yes. We, I'm grateful that there are low hos, what we are seeing, though, is a, is a higher increase in 20-year-olds, 30-year-olds being hospitalized, people that we didn't assume would get hospitalized several months ago. And so, you know, here's the thing, the more kids that get exposed, that means the more that will get sick, and the more that, just by laws of numbers, the more that will get hospitalized. And, you know, we've been lucky so far in that the, the death rates are really low in kids, but in my opinion, any death in what is now a vaccine-preventable illness in a kid is, is a real tragedy. And so, so that's where I think we really need to focus on.
Last question. Do they keep statistics for the ones that are going in the hospital as far as, well, still, quote, comorbidities, someone with asthma or some other underlying health condition? Are they keeping statistics on, on something like that with the ones who end up getting more severely ill or in the hospital, that they have another underlying health condition?
Uh, yeah, yes. And while it is more likely for someone with, you know, significant illness to potentially get hospitalized or have a worse course, COVID is extremely unpredictable in children. And so children who are, you know, a healthy three-year-old or a healthy 12-year-old can very well likely end up in the ICU. And so that, that's the piece. It, it doesn't follow the, the textbook really well for kids as we would maybe assume for, it does for adults. And we're kind of seeing that in adults too, with 30-year-olds being transferred or passing away. We don't, we wouldn't expect that either, you know? And so I think that's the issue, is it's just extremely unpredictable as to who, who's really affected in these younger age groups, and that's something that's, you know, concerning.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. And so what, so this graph is from the American Academy of Pediatrics. They put out a weekly report of the effect of COVID on kids. And so in the number of cases, so this starts in, this starts in April of last year, all the way through now. And so the, the big bump in the middle, it was the winter surge, January. And actually, what happened during this Delta surge is there were many more infections in kids. And so that may be surprising, but again, kids were mostly unvaccinated when Delta came along, and so they're just getting affected by it more. And in terms of the percent of cases in kids, they now account for nationally about 27% of the total COVID cases. So, and again, in the winter, it was much more something we were seeing in adults, in, you know, in seniors. And, you know, this is really the effect of Delta, and really, if we didn't have as many adults vaccinated at this point, the adult burden of disease would be much higher too. In, so back to hospitalization, so in the past month, we've had 12 residents hospitalized, and what we're seeing really mimics what's going on in the rest of the state and the country, where about 90% of people being hospitalized are not fully vaccinated. And that does include young children who do not even have the opportunity to get vaccinated, but that is what we're seeing where, and the ones who are fully vaccinated, those breakthrough cases getting hospitalized, those are actually majority in seniors and older population, which is why now we have boosters coming on the scene. So in general, what we're seeing eastern shore throughout Maryland is a younger population. So in the past month, most of our hospitalized cases have actually been in people under age 65. And so a lot of people ask me, well, you know, you can still spread COVID if you're vaccinated, you can, you know, why aren't vaccinated people required to quarantine? And really, the reason is that it's five times less likely that you're going to get infected in the first place, and you're 10 times less likely to be hospitalized. And so that's really the protective effect of vaccination. And so, so that's where we're seeing how, how important it is to get vaccinated. And again, at the beginning of this whole experience, one of the main things was, we have to make sure that we don't overburden our hospital system, and that's exactly what we're seeing in certain states. Maryland is one of the more vaccinated states, fortunately, so, but we are seeing, even locally, our hospitals cancel elective surgeries now and have trouble with staffing. So we are seeing a bit of that effect. The big difference, since the last time I presented, of course, is that schools in the county have begun the new academic year, and of course, in Maryland, there is a mask requirement. The CDC did come out with a study recently showing that in states and locations where masks were not required in school, they were three and a half times more likely to have outbreaks. So that is something that hopefully will keep our kids protected. But the big, you know, difference this year compared to last year, at least with schools, is that the goal was trying to allow as many students experience in-person learning, a full curriculum, rather than having to do virtual learning. We talk about, you know, mental health burdens, and that was a huge problem with kids last year, and being so disconnected from school and peers. The flip side is, when you get a lot of kids, almost three times as many in one room as last year, we are starting, you know, we are seeing some cases. And so there's been a big burden on the quarantine process. We, you know, and it's this constant battle of trying to balance the risk of potential spread of COVID in schools with the benefit of in-school attendance. And so this year, we really tried to, you know, lessen the burden of quarantining. And so we, we follow the, the CDC guidelines, the MSDE guidelines, the MDH guidelines, and that includes a more limited definition of close contact. So for instance, last year, we heard about six feet apart is, is, you know, the definition of if you're close to someone. And in schools, it actually went down to three feet apart, so that allows more kids in the schools. What we're actually finding difficult is that a lot of kids are moving class to class to class throughout the day, they're having lunch, not mastering the lunch, and, and so while we want to limit the number of kids that do get quarantined, it's, it's a real push-pull. And the good news is that anyone fully vaccinated, like I mentioned, does not need to quarantine. So theoretically, every kid 12 and over may not need to have to quarantine if they were vaccinated. Now, right now, we're not there, but that, you know, that would be amazing if no one in the high school had to quarantine. And we are actually looking now at innovative ways to further reduce the need to quarantine through some testing protocols, because, you know, our goal is really to try to get, to try to allow the kids to stay in school and experience a full school year. The challenge we're seeing, though, is also that there's a very high demand for testing, and in the county and in the mid-shore in general, we're having a lot of problems finding adequate testing. Right now, it's primarily local health departments, some physician offices, and some local urgent care centers that are offering testing. Unfortunately, we don't have any pharmacies in the county that do testing, and so, you know, you either have to travel or wait on the line to get an appointment. Some places are having difficulty getting supplies because there's just such a burden. And so this is something that, you know, I've, I keep telling the state that we need help with, because we, you know, we unfortunately don't have, you know, some of the resources that some other parts of those states do regarding testing. The, like I mentioned before, you know, we are doing relatively well in the state for vaccination, about the third-highest county in terms of general vaccination rates. And really, the path out of this pandemic is really vaccination, and we are making progress, but the progress has slowed. Right now, we're seeing about 400 doses of vaccine a week, and that, you know, so that has really slowed over the past several months. In Talbot County?
That 400 coming to Easton?
Um, yeah. So that is 400, and they could be first doses or second doses every week.
That's what, that's what we're getting from the state?
Oh, no, 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 no. No, no, no. That, the supply is not an issue. This is how many doses are being given to people.
In, in here, where?
In, in, yeah, to, let's say, to Talbot residents. They could get it anywhere. But, and so, you know, a month ago, we were seeing about 500 doses a week, and that was kind of when that Delta started to pick up. We saw a demand, but it's actually kind of, you know, decreased a little bit the past few weeks. Right now, across our entire population, age zero to, you know, 100-plus, 71% of our population has received at least one dose of a COVID vaccine, so that's really, really good. And 66% of our population is fully vaccinated. So like I said, we are close, but numerically, you know, that means there are over 12,000 residents who are not fully vaccinated and protected, and that's why we're seeing so many cases spread so quickly now. Of course, of these, you know, over 12,000 people, about 4,400 of them are kids not eligible yet, and so there's not much we can do about them right now. And I do know that probably, you know, 15 to 20% of people are, you know, resistant or concerned about getting vaccinated themselves, but we are very, very close to getting, you know, to the vaccination rates that will help us see a decrease in our cases. The problem is that we're not seeing the distribution of vaccination among the age groups and among the demographics, you know, equal enough. And so that's partly why we're seeing the case burden on the younger teens and, and young adults.
So Dr. McGuire, I have to ask the same question I asked before. Nowhere in any presentation do I ever see the people who had COVID who have natural immunity. We can, you know, agree or disagree. We can agree or disagree whether it has longer effects or shorter effects than the, than the shot.
Uh huh.
But it exists, people do have natural immunity, and nowhere, and it should be part of that three-legged stool. And until it is, you know, I, it's just, it's just. presentation do I ever see the people who had COVID who have natural immunity. We can, you know, agree or disagree.[575.16][575.16][applause] We can agree or disagree whether it has longer effects or shorter effects than the shot.
Uh huh.
But it exists. People do have natural immunity. And nowhere, and it should be part of that three-legged stool. And until it is, you know, it's just, it's just difficult. You're saying, you know, people get judged if they haven't, and if they have natural immunity, you know, and there's no, there is a test for it, but it's never included in the numbers. And so I would encourage you because-
Well, let me, let me just step back and say-
Again, whether it's, whether it's as effective or not, it exists.
Well, and the reason it's not as protective is because the COVID 1.0 that occurred last year is not going to be protective against Delta.
Well, then neither is the vaccine.[630.04][630.04][applause]
So that's factually incorrect.
I agree that it may keep you from getting sick.
That's not true at all. And the reason is because of the way the mechanism of the vaccine works. Okay? It works against the common spike protein. And so the vaccine is extremely effective against the Delta variant.
It doesn't stop the spread. It may stop you from getting sick. I agree with-
It does stop the spread.
But you're telling me that it doesn't stop the spread.
No, I'm telling you it does. I'm telling you that the Delta is winning right now.
Can we keep it down?
So I can only tell you it's factually, you know, correct from, from the studies and from the science. And what we're seeing, and let's go back, let's go back to, to, you know, the, the counties that have the highest vaccination rates, the countries that have the highest vaccination rates are having a much lower burden of disease. We know that we're seeing that. You can look at Tennessee. You can look at Florida. You can look at Mississippi.
All I said was you have to include natural immunity. You have to. And you aren't.
So the problem is it's very difficult to quantify that. And the thing is, you're comparing apples and oranges. So a year ago, COVID was not the same as it is now. What we are learning, you know, this is new. What we're learning about COVID, too, is that everyone's natural immunity may be different in a way. Okay? It's not a controlled thing like a vaccination is, where we know exactly what the mechanism of action is. The mechanism of action of the vaccination, we know, is it's vaccination against the common element of this virus, the surrounding crown, some might say, around the virus. And so that's partly why it's so effective, because we know that your immunity is being developed against something that's common across COVID. Okay? Whether or not your immunity develops an adequate response may be, you know, on an individual basis, different. But the thing is, the, you know, COVID 1.0 is different, and we're seeing reinfections in people who got infected last year. We're seeing that, you know, the natural immunity in general may not last as long as vaccination.
But if you're not testing for it, then how can you really quantify it? That's what I'm saying. It just should be part of the conversation. And it just doesn't seem to be. And I'll stop with that.
Okay. Yeah. And the thing is, there are studies going on, looking at antibody levels. That is one piece of the immune system. There's other pieces of the immune system that you can't measure with antibody titers. And so, you know, and then, of course, we're operating in, you know, a different story right now than we were a year ago. And so it's kind of hard to compare. But what we are seeing, you know, and of course, vaccines are not perfect. They're not meant to be perfect. Most vaccines require boosters. You know, you look at-
So let me ask one more question. If somebody gets infected now with a Delta variant and they have natural immunity, shouldn't that count? Even if you don't want to go back to COVID 1.0, if someone has gotten infected with a Delta variant in the last couple of months, they have natural immunity from that. And again, it's just not part of the conversation.
Well, I think the problem is it's really hard to standardize what is that natural immunity, you know? And so is it, you're measuring, you know, a certain antibody titer, you're quantifying that, you're measuring the presence of it, are you measuring your T-cell response? I mean, it's, it can get, the question you're asking is kind of hard to answer in a way, you know? And so that's why there's ongoing studies. And so anyone who is infected with Delta, you know, we saw this surge happen in the U.S. starting in the summer. You know, we need time to collect those results and see what does natural immunity look like. But what we are seeing is someone who had an infection with COVID and then is vaccinated is having a very robust response because that's almost like a booster in itself, you know? If you get your two-dose series after having had COVID, and that's why we do recommend that, because it is that extra, you know, boost of your immune system. So, so getting back to what's going on with the age groups and vaccination. So in our teens statewide, there's about a 62% rate of fully vaccination in our 12- to 17-year-olds. The eastern shore is behind on this. And, you know, it's a bit unclear why. On the eastern shore, Talbot does lead in that over half of our teens are fully vaccinated against COVID right now. But our neighbors are really low. And so this is something where, again, if we don't have a more equal distribution of protection, we're going to keep seeing cases occur in teens and kids. But there is reason to hope for some of our younger kids. We are seeing a lot more cases coming up now in the younger kids in our schools, especially our elementary schools. And actually, just today, Pfizer submitted data to the FDA on its effectiveness and safety in 5- to 11-year-olds. And so they're going to ask for approval in a few weeks, we expect. So probably an FDA approval for this group. And the reason, again, that this is important is not necessarily that we're seeing, you know, a huge number of kids hospitalized or dying of COVID, but they do spread it and they can get sick. And this is the way that we can help, you know, end, end COVID spread in our communities, which is really the end goal. And again, you know, 12% of our population is in this age group, 4,400 kids. Nationwide, it's 28 million children. And the interesting thing about kids right now is they are a huge block of population that is essentially, due to school attendance, required to stay indoors with a lot of peers. You know, a lot of us are still working from home, working remotely, working with six foot between us. And so this is one reason why it's important for this group of kids to, to get vaccinated, and why I think, once they start getting vaccinated, we will finally see a real good turn in our cases, and hope that by the end of the year, we'll see a good downturn. I did want to mention that we are, you know, we've been vaccinating at the health department since January. And we actually, as of tomorrow, are moving our vaccine operations to Marlboro Avenue in the former Hearthstone location. And as of next week, we will be operating Monday through Friday. And you can come and get your primary series. You can get your third dose if you're immunocompromised. And we're actually starting to give boosters of Pfizer because that is a, that is the new thing. So again, what, what you can do to get vaccinated. Two doses of Pfizer, two doses Moderna, one dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson will get you fully vaccinated and protected. Immunocompromised people, so that's people with, you know, active cancer diagnoses, immunocompromised conditions, they are eligible to get a third Moderna or Pfizer dose at least 28 days after their second dose of the same vaccine. And we have been giving those. And this is because the thought is that individuals who do not have a robust immune system are unable to mount an adequate immune response. And boosters, this is the new thing. So for people who received Pfizer, six months after they got their second dose, they can come and get a booster dose. And this is recommended for anyone over 65, for adults with high-risk medical conditions, and for adults who work, who have a high risk of exposure due to their occupations or, or the setting in which they live. Now, soon, we expect Moderna to also be approved for boosters. And so anyone can come to the health department to get their Pfizer booster, you know, starting tomorrow at our new location. So-
Dr. Maguire, I just want to make sure that people, when they hear the third shot, it's, it's the same shot, but it's, instead of two, it's three.
Yeah. So in Pfizer, it's the same dose. In Moderna, they're looking at potentially a lower dose. So we'll have more information on exactly what that means when it gets approved. But that's, again, not going to be for a few weeks. And on that same point, one of the things about the kids vaccination is Pfizer presented data on a vaccine that's a third of the adult dose. And they saw in their study that it mounted the same response in the kids. And, because the goal is to give as low a dose as possible to be effective. And so that's where kind of dose differences may come in. So our best practices right now are to get vaccinated. There is overwhelming evidence of safety and effectiveness. We've seen a lot of misinformation out there. I receive a lot of it myself. And so there are some really good places where you can go to, to, you know, see these myths debunked. The Mayo Clinic has a great website, Johns Hopkins, University of Maryland. And really, what we need to get to herd immunity is for everyone who can to get vaccinated. And that will protect all of those around us. And of course, the other thing is to remember back to my first slide about the transmission risk and to wear masks in indoor public settings when we're in the substantial or high transmission risk. We will get back down to the time when we can take the mask off, but not quite, not quite yet. And, you know, it's not all COVID all the time. So at the health department, I did want to just mention, we are back to our regular programming. We are issuing, you know, birth and death certificates. We're conducting in-home and community-based services. We're seeing, and we're expanding our chronic disease self-management program. We're seeing significant increase referrals for senior care. We've been strengthening our partnership with the area agency on aging, ensuring that the children in school get caught up on their regular vaccinations, because that was one effect we saw of the pandemic was kids got behind. And we're working with local providers on substance abuse prevention, coordinating treatment services, and a lot more. And so that's all going on in the background. And I'm really glad that, you know, over the past several months, we've been able to get back into our regular programming. One of the big things coming up, of course, which we engage in every year, is flu vaccination. So flu season is a big question mark this year because last year, there was essentially no influenza activity. Right now, flu activity is very low nationally and in Maryland. And on this map, Maryland is actually in the minimal category, not zero, but minimal. Some places are seeing, like Ohio, Nevada are seeing somewhat increased activity, but definitely nowhere near where we see peaking. And so now is a great time to get vaccinated against the flu. Several pharmacies offer it. And you can receive your COVID vaccine and flu vaccine on the exact same day. Make it easy, you know, two for one. So we at the health department, we will be conducting our normal community and site-specific flu vaccines, such as in schools and certain workplaces. And that's something that we're gearing up to do very soon. And hopefully, we will be able to offer it at our, at our vaccine center as well for anyone who wants to come down. So that is a brief update about what's going on, mostly with COVID, but some other things in the health department. And again, thank you for inviting me down to give you an update.
Okay, Dr. Maguire. Thank you. Dr. I mean-
Yeah, that's my father.
That's your mom.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Maguire, for coming in. Mrs. Price's comments made, made me kind of question. I don't think I've ever seen a statistic on what percentage of the population has had COVID-19. And that would be something that I would be interested in seeing that number.
Yeah, yeah. So I can tell you right now, our official number, at least for the county, is about, I believe it's about 3,300 right now. However, that is an undercount. We know there's many cases who, you know, either didn't get tested or we knew didn't get tested and were just diagnosed. And so, you know, so that puts us at about 10%. Now, here's the thing, some people got reinfected, you know? So there are studies that look at, you know, in, for example, in sewage, you know, looking at antibodies and stuff. And, you know, so the thought is somewhere potentially in the 15% range. So, so it's, it's actually a lot more widespread than we, you know, than we have numbers and tallies on.
Thank you. And so to, you provide this information to us, and you're, you've been fantastic with providing information and answering questions anytime I have one. And anybody in the county calls me with a strange question, I bring it to you and you provide the answer. I was fortunate enough to recently help appoint you or make a recommendation to you for this position. It's, you didn't go to one Ivy League, right? Didn't you go to multiple? Is that?
Oh, well, yeah.
Okay. It seemed to me, to recall that as an M.D., you have a pretty great resume. And it's, it's very broad. And I know it's public knowledge, it's out there. But I don't want the community thinking that we just have a scientist sitting here in front of us that's just giving us reports directly from Pfizer or Johnson &amp; Johnson.
Yeah, that, that's exactly true. And so, and this is something, I am a pediatrician, a board-certified pediatrician. I have taken care of kids with COVID in the hospital. I've seen it. I've been talking to, you know, ER doctors this whole time and have a great relationship with a lot of my physician colleagues. So that does give me that kind of extra, you know, insight into what's going on. But, you know, thank you for the, for the comment.
And I still just think back to the first time my son ran 105-degree fever and how freaked out I was. He was an infant, racing him to the emergency room and demanding he go back immediately and calling everybody I knew to get him back in there. And I just can't imagine sidestepping an opportunity to prevent that in my children. So thank, thank you for the work that you do and the information you provide.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiVellio. Mr. Lashford?
I'll start just with a thank you for bringing solid data to the questions, not only tonight, but really every day, because you're providing this information to the community through the website every day and, and keeping that updated and keeping the community informed about this. And that's, that's a huge service to the community. I, I've got a question about this, this surge, local surge that we have, particularly among elementary students, which is very worrisome. You know, I've got a, I've got a middle school son and he, who just turned 12. And, and, and the sad thing is, what did he want most for his 12th birthday? He wanted a vaccination. He wants his freedom. He wants to get out of this. He wants to help us all get out of this. And, geez, can't you ask for a toy or something? But, you know, but he got his vaccine. At any rate, with this surge in the elementary schools, are we seeing, and I, I saw that we've got, what, up to 10% of our school students either out or, or on quarantine? Is that evenly distributed throughout the county? Do we have hotspots? That may be a better question for the schools, but if you're aware of that.
So what we're seeing is currently, we have three, what's called classroom outbreaks. And these are occurring in the elementary schools. We do have a couple schools that are accounting for a higher rate of absenteeism, not all due to COVID, but, you know, and, that's, that's actually hitting the St. Michael's community harder. So the reason behind this is, as with a lot of things, COVID is multifactorial. So in the high school, we have the benefit of almost 50% of our teens vaccinated. So that's actually lowering the burden there. In the, the lower schools, what we're seeing is, quite frankly, the very, very youngest, the pre-K, the pre-K3s, they don't honestly wear their mask a lot of the day because of, you know, lots of snack breaks and recess and everything. And so that may be part of it. What we're seeing, though, honestly, that's disturbing is, it's, it's not that there's a huge amount of spread within the schools necessarily, it's that kids are coming into school sick. And that's something we really need to ask parents to really be conscientious about, is they're showing up with a fever at 8:00 a.m. in the morning. The rest, the family is sick and the kid has, you know, symptoms too and are coming in. And, and that's, that's a lot of what we're seeing, where the whole family is sick. And, and so it's, it creates a huge burden on the students because what we're seeing is, for the average same middle schooler, they may come into what's defined as close contact with 20 to 25 other kids throughout the day. And does that mean all of them have to be quarantined? You know?
Maybe they're just there with a cold. I mean, granted, I think you should keep your, you know, your kid home if you've got a runny nose, but it doesn't mean it's COVID either. It could just be a cold.
No. Well, and that's the confusing thing. There's a lot of other viruses going around. There's RSV, there's, you know-
So do they automatically quarantine them if they have a fever and a runny nose?
So if someone's symptomatic, then they do a rapid test. And, and if it's negative, then they send the confirmatory PCR. And then, once that comes back, you know, or there's an alternative diagnosis, then the kid can come back to school. So they don't need, you know, if they're diagnosed with COVID, yes, they're isolated. But if they're diagnosed with something else, they come back.
What if they're not diagnosed with anything, they just have a negative PCR test? Are they going to come back to school?
Well, yeah. If their symptoms are improved, yeah, for sure. It's, it's the, when I talk about quarantine, that's really kids that are in close proximity to a kid who was tested positive, you know? So- positive, you know. So, so say I'm a child at a desk, and my neighbor here, within two feet, you know, has COVID, then that means that officially, according to the rules, I need to go on quarantine. And so we're seeing that that's affecting a lot of kids. And as much as we're trying to decrease, you know, how many kids need to go on quarantine, we have seen, you know, several, several kids that we think caught COVID, you know, from their, their class. And so it's, it's a really hard balance between keeping kids safe and trying to minimize the extremely disruptive effect of quarantine on everyone's lives.
So they're quarantining kids that have no symptoms?
So quarantine is by definition, yeah, keeping people home from work or school who've been exposed. And so, so, yeah, and exactly. And so the, the CDC recommendation is, is 10 days if you are able to keep a mask on, and to monitor for your symptoms. Now, the actual recommendation from MDH, and from MSD, and from the CDC, is that the gold standard, the best thing is to quarantine for 14 days. However, research showed that those last few days, it's pretty unlikely that, if you're not sick already, that you actually have gotten COVID. And so they decreased the quarantine to 10 days.
But you can do a rapid test and a PCR test, which is back in 48 hours. So why would they keep them out for seven to 10 days? If they, if a kid has no symptoms, and they've been in close proximity, like a little kid that's sitting next to you there in that chair, and they assume that, and if they go get the rapid test and the PCR test, why isn't that good enough for them to go back to school if it comes back negative?
So it is good enough if they get tested on day five, which is when they've had an adequate time for their, for the, the virus to kind of replicate in their body and show up on a test. And so the protocol is, if you, you know, if you go on quarantine and you get tested on day five, you can come back after day seven. And that's generally, you know, the timeframe for getting a test back. And so what we're actually seeing in real life is, by the time we find out about a kid getting a positive test, you know, some kids go on quarantine, they end up maybe not missing more than a few days, because by the time everyone's been identified, and then they've gotten the test back, and they go back to school, it may not be that they're actually, you know, out of school for seven days. But obviously, that's something we want to minimize. And whether that's implementing screening testing, which is something I've recommended for the schools to help try to prevent quarantine, or some kind of test to stay in the school, that's all been figured out. However, that's not part of the CDC recommendation right now. That's something some other places are playing with.
So maybe we don't listen to CDC. Maybe we just implement our own tests. Why not?
Well, so then...
If we have access, if we have access to the tests, and we can, now you have to go all the way back in the nose, why not?
So the problem with the rapid antigen tests is that they're only about 44% accurate in someone who's not symptomatic.
But that might keep 44% more kids in school.
So it's a flip of a coin. And so, so what we do, and everything we have to do has to be based on data, has to be, you know, otherwise, it's just a random decision and arbitrary. And that's just not how we operate in medical care or in healthcare. Because the goal, of course, is, you know, first, do no harm. And so you don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater.
I could just go on about the harm that we're doing to their mental health, and the fact that they can't get an education because they took virtual school out, and they get a homework assignment with all the technology, with all the money, and this has nothing to do with you, it has everything to do with the school system, with all the money and technology that they were given last year to do virtual school all year, and for these kids to go home and be quarantined, and not even have access to virtual school? We've got to do something, sorry.
No, I get it. I mean, I have a five-year-old, and it is extremely disruptive to go on quarantine and take off work, and, you know, and we've got to get better. But each of us does hold that responsibility, too. And there are ways that each of us can contribute to this improving in the community.
Mr. Pach, are you still with us? Mr. Pach?
Yes, 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 I am still with you. I'm listening to you.
Okay, all right. I'm going to give you a few minutes. Go ahead.
No, I, I won't take but a moment. Dr. Maguire, to you and to your other professionals in the healthcare industry, you know, my, my heart goes out to you all. This last year and a half, it's probably been one of the more stressful times in your profession, not just dealing with this deadly virus, but dealing with all of the misinformation and the confusion that's been the social media atmosphere. So again, I just want to say, keep up the good work, keep focusing on the science, and keep focusing on keeping people safe and protected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pach.
I, I do just have one, one more question for you, which is, one, one thing that you did include in your presentation was, which I picked up in, I think, one of your press releases a little, a little while back, had to do with the availability of, of the, the proof of vaccination, which I had occasion to, to be asked for, for the first time, when I attended an event last week. And, and some people are just taking pictures of their cards, or carrying them around. But, but there's this verifiable way of doing that. If you may want to take the liberty of providing that further information, a reminder of that tonight.
Definitely, yeah. Thank you for bringing that up. So as it becomes more and more useful to have verifiable proof of your vaccination status, whether that's for, you know, a fun event like a concert, or a flying or something, we, we did partner with a company that's able to coordinate with the state immunization registry, so that it's an accurate, verifiable copy of your vaccine card. Now, you know, I'm sure a lot of people have lost their vaccine cards, or they've been, you know, torn up or something. And so this is a way that if you need to present it to your workplace, to the concert you're going to, to wherever, a Broadway show, you know, you can use it. And it's something that Talbot Health Department is, is paying for and supporting. So I urge you, if you have received a vaccine, to go on our website and sign up for the Vaccine Check app. It's quick, it's easy, it's available in English and Spanish. And it can, you know, it's very easy. If someone ever needs to say, you know, what day did you get vaccinated, say you're off to get your, your booster shot. Pull it up, and that can help.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Maguire, anybody else? Good. Dr. Maguire, appreciate, appreciate everything. The answer to every question, no was tough, but we really do appreciate it.
Thanks very much. Thanks for having me.
You're welcome. Okay. Let's move on. We'll run it obviously a little later on the public hearing. So we've got a couple, a couple more things to get through before we get to the public hearing, just to let everybody know. So, okay, the next presentation is Talbot County Public Schools on the FY23 Capital Improvement Project. Now, Kevin, come on over here.
Thank you, President Callahan. Good evening, members of the council. So before I begin this evening on the presentation, I just wanted to talk briefly on a couple of accolades that Easton Elementary has gotten recently. The first being receiving the Outstanding Design in the 2021 American School and University Architectural Portfolio, which is basically just a natural, a national publication of architectural projects for, for obviously for schools and universities. So to be recognized for that is a, is a, is a big deal in the architectural world. But more importantly, I think, is we also received Lead Gold, which is a big deal, especially Version 4, which is very difficult to get. It's actually the first school in Maryland to, to get that designation. So, so we're proud of that, and we'll certainly keep the council aware of any presentations that take place regarding those awards as they, as they come.
Congratulations. I know as Facilities Director, you had a huge role in making that happen, so.
Mr. Lecher, I appreciate that, but you know, it's a huge team that makes this work. And the hats, my hat really goes off to the architect and the construction management firm for the work that they did. Amazing stuff. So, so on with the presentation. So I do come before the council this evening to request consideration of the FY23 Talbot County Public Schools Capital Improvement Plan. I provided the council the entire CIP document for review, and my presentation tonight includes only two slides that review the most relevant portions of the document. So the first slide displays a portion of Form 102.1, which outlines the costs associated with the current Easton High School roof replacement project. And there's a couple items I just want to note on that slide there, and I apologize, it's a little hard to read. But highlighted in yellow is the funding program. This is an important change from previous years due to the addition of the Built to Learn Act funding source, which I'm going to call BLA for short. The specific BLA funding changes remain largely undefined. But the positive aspects that I'd like to share with the council tonight are that, so without going into the weeds, and you can certainly answer questions, you know, after, yeah, I won't. I'll try not to, Mr. Callahan. But basically, Built to Learn Act funding is going to be available on a revolving basis, instead of on the regimented schedule that the standard CIP process has. And the IAC will now also participate in other costs, such as design fees, FF and E, and construction management costs. So basically, they will take part in procuring the architect and paying for furniture, furniture and stuff like that. There are some challenges. I'm not even going to go there, because, like I said, it's undefined at this point. So the orange is just simply that, showing that this is the first priority in this year's submission. And the three green highlighted items are the actual costs associated with the current roof replacement at Easton High. And I'm able to report to the council that the costs shown remain accurate, and the use of the contingency funding has not been required to this point in the project.
So Kevin, are we halfway done on the roof?
So we will be halfway done at this phase. We're currently halfway done with the removal and installation of the first sheet of the two-ply system. So they're working on putting on the, the cap sheet, they call it the top sheet, on the rest of the, the portion that's been removed and had the first layer installed.
They're working now?
Yeah, they're still working.
And when will they, when will they work up to?
So it depends on how much they do and weather. But basically, we're hoping by the end of October, we would see them complete, you know, that first phase.
Okay. And then we'll be back in, what, in the school year?
Yes, correct, in June.
For next summer?
Correct.
I got you.
So the second and final slide that I have for you is Form 102.4 from the document, which includes a summary of the current and potential future requests. I'll discuss the highlighted sections from top to bottom on this form. And, you know, don't panic, but I just want to go through and explain where I'm at in the five-year plan. So highlighted in yellow is the remaining state portion of the $841,000, based on the actual costs associated with the Easton High School roof. So for FY23, which starts in June, we would ask the state to fund that $841,000 to complete that roof project, the part that they've, they've already agreed to participate in. The three-dollar amounts highlighted in green are related to the Chapel District Elementary School campus improvements. So in FY24, the replacement of the Chapel roof is listed as the next requested project with an estimated cost of $1.14 million. And in FY25 and 26, the renovation of Chapel is listed there as being the next significant capital improvement with a total estimated cost of $22 million. The total funding requirements are projected to be $12.6 million from the state, and $14.87 million locally over the next five years, if the Capital Improvement Plan were to be realized. Now, obviously, there's lots of factors that are involved there that would have to fall into place for this to, to move forward at this schedule. And I know this may be the first time that the council was hearing some of these numbers and, and projects. But what I wanted to just briefly talk about with the council is that I had available funding to go through an edspec and feasibility study process for Chapel, which basically is just a precursor to a renovation project. But basically, where we're at is, we're looking for the architectural firm that does this process, you know, with the stakeholders involved, to come up with a recommendation. I'm not professionally qualified to analyze that building from top to bottom and determine what needs there are. So that's why we contract with the architectural firm to, and, and, you know, mechanical engineers, and structural engineers and all that, to make a determination on what the recommendation should be for Chapel, which could mean a limited renovation, which is just a kind of a systemics, to a full renovation, which is what I've included, just as kind of a notification to the council and the state that we are looking at this. By the time this would be, come to fruition, Chapel's going to reach that 30-year mark, which is kind of the magic number for full state participation. And so I'm just trying to, you know, get things in the queue for, for the upcoming years. And, and obviously, you know, I can certainly take the council for a tour, or, you know, we can schedule a time to walk through and just kind of show you what we're seeing if you haven't been in Chapel for, for a time, because it is an aging building. So now, worst-case scenario, funding issues come up, and this is delayed. I've, I've listed the, the roof replacement, which is the most urgent need first. If we were to go through the edspec and feasibility study process, and it is recommended a full renovation, we obviously would take that out. We wouldn't, you know, replace the roof and then renovate. That doesn't make sense from a construction standpoint. So I guess it's to be determined, but I just wanted to make sure that it was on the, on the horizon there.
Is that because of utilities on the, located up on the roof that would be interrupted by that?
Exactly. So, yeah, replacing the roof, and then replacing all the rooftop units wouldn't make sense. So...
So just a question.
Sure.
So being in the community with, you know, you did all that, so you're basically starting on the same process.
Yes.
Every day.
Yes.
Five, six years ago.
Yeah. So I was not part of the feasibility study for Easton Elementary School. That was, I came on just as that was concluding. So this is a, this is the first step, like I said, for, for the state to participate in something like this. So...
So at this time, it's just the feasibility of determining if it's going to be used, used or not?
Yes, right, exactly.
This is not anticipating an increase in capacity, this is for the existing plan?
Well, so that is a good question, Ms. Lecher. So there's, there's lots of factors at play. So the state has increased their square footage per student allotment. So, so what that means is that they would participate in a greater square footage amount than what we have currently. Now, that's not significant, but it's constantly changing. And by the time we would get to planning, which is the, prior to funding, the year prior, you have to ask for planning. And then the following year after planning approval, you get all, if you meet all the deadlines, then you can ask for funding. We may be looking at an extra 5,000 or 6,000 square feet, based on the state's numbers. Now, of course, we would want the enrollment projections to, to match with that. But one of the things that's been a little frustrating is there's been some housing developments that we weren't quite aware of. And I don't know where those currently are, specific to Chapel's district. But we do have a meeting with the, with the county and town planners to talk about some of these developments in a little greater detail. So we'll be able to, you know, answer that question a little bit better. So, so that does conclude the presentation that I had. I can certainly answer any other questions that the council may have, but I am asking for support of this document to send to the state, which requires a letter from the council to do that.
Well, the, the other two schools, this is the first we've heard of it. So what is your timetable for submission to the state?
So, as it said, so we wouldn't be looking for any kind of funding from the council until FY24, and that would only be for the roof. But that is contingent upon what the...
It's talking about the two elementary schools. The renovation of the two elementary schools.
So the, the only renovation that we're talking about right now is just for Chapel. It's just broken up into two years over, because it would be a two-year project.
Okay.
So that's the, that's the...
I'm just saying, this is the first we've heard of it, and you want us to support it. I mean, that's why I'm asking what your timetable is for that.
For funding?
Submission to the state.
Yeah. So the timetable, this is an annual document, Ms. Price, so this, this has to be submitted, you know, each, each October. The deadline's somewhere in the first week of October each year.
So at the Board of Education meeting that we had three weeks ago, we couldn't have been told about it then? I mean, it's just, it's hard to process and vote on something on the same night, when you're talking about an $11 million item. And I know it's years out, but we just had a meeting with you guys that should have been on the agenda. So...
Agreed, agreed.
It's not like you didn't know that the schools were at the age that they are. And this is the first, I've heard of it.
Yeah. So I don't set those agendas for those meetings, but I certainly do...
But, I mean, you're the one who works on the, on the, and, and done a wonderful job. I mean, the whole project with, you know, with the new elementary school, I mean, kudos, absolutely. You've been amazing to work with. But if this is a renovation project, and this is kind of your gig, I think you probably should have mentioned it to the Board of Education or to Kelly, to have had us a little bit apprised of this a few weeks ago. bit apprised of this a few weeks ago when we met with the entire Board of Education. Again, not your fault, but this is your project...
I'm not actually deferring blame to anyone else. I take the blame that it was not included on that agenda. Maybe I should have made a larger case for it to be on there. I guess the issue that kind of comes to the forefront for me is that this is very tentative. And so one of the things that I really kind of want to make clear to the council is that Easton Elementary School took seven years to come to fruition. You know, from the time that this all started from the feasibility study, there was a long layer between the feasibility study and the actual construction. So, yes, I agree that it's important to communicate with the council, but I, this is a very aggressive timeline, and I guess that's the one caveat that I would give to the council.
So, Mr. Schaefer, what you're asking for now is simply a letter that commits this as part of the, a planning document that would help cue us up for the state funding that would support this, should we be able to meet this timetable?
That's right.
Mr. President, I would note that the letter that the county does send to the Board of Education every year regarding this project always has a caveat in it that says that funding, that we approve the CIP contingent on funding be available at the time these capital projects come forward. So that comment is always...
Well, with that, I'll move for the letter as requested.
Okay. So, excuse me, Mr. DeVio.
So, yes, the, do you have a timeline on the roof for Chapel? How far out is, how long do you think that'll last?
Well, so, you know, the current timeline would be, so let's say that the feasibility study process does not come to a full renovation, you know, the termination and the recommendation is not that, then we would be looking to replace the roof in FY '24, or at least start that process. So that may only be a request for planning for FY '24 and do that in FY '25. This is, I know this, you know, when you deal with the procedural stuff associated with the state every day, I do tend to assume that everybody has the same level of understanding, but this is basically just a warning to the state of upcoming projects so that they have some idea. But I didn't even get into the weeds on the issues at hand. There's a whole state process that's going into assessing our buildings, every building in the state, and they are in the process of not only assessing it from a maintenance standpoint, but from also a educational sufficiency standpoint. Each building be rated, and then the funding that I'm talking about, the Built to Learn Act funding, will actually be tied to that rating. So let's say that we go through this process and Chapel's in the middle of the road somewhere statewide. The chance that this would actually be funded at the state level may be very small.
Absolutely. They're definitely doing a ranking system of all, looking at all the schools in the state, and they are ranking them. And the problem with that, and this one we did talk about at the Board of Education meeting, is that it almost rewards school districts who have not properly maintained their buildings. So if you let it fall apart and you haven't put operating funds into maintaining your school building, you might be more likely to get money from the state for either a renovation or a new school. So that is, you know, and I know Dr. Griffith, you know, agreed with that, that this is, I mean, this is wrong, that they're not looking at how well have you maintained your building as part of the quote-unquote pecking order and ranking system, and something that Mako and our representative from Mako talked about a lot during that, I think it was the NOK Commission, I think? That group. So the way the state's gone about doing this Build to Learn Act, there are definitely a lot of flaws in it. And, you know, because Talbot County, one thing to say, we have been incredible with the way we have maintained our schools and how long they have lasted. I guess the new school, that school, you know, Glenwood, I've also called Glenwood, you know, over 50 years, right?
Right.
So, you know, we're not even at the 30-year mark, so...
So just to be clear, the school is much older than 30 years. So it's just 30 years since its last renovation?
Last major renovation, yeah.
How old is that school?
50s.
50s, okay.
Maybe late 50s, early 60s, but it's...
Okay. So this just moves it forward, it doesn't commit, it doesn't commit to council?
That's correct.
All it does is send a letter that to see if we're going to be getting any state funding in the future.
That is correct. And so it's not even for, it's just for next year's money?
Right.
But it's just a notice.
Okay.
I mean, yes and no. I mean, because we have to pay a little more than 50% of the bill, and once you send a letter to the state saying that we basically support this, I'm not saying that we don't support renovating our schools. My problem is we're just hearing about it tonight. And certainly sometime over the last year, since the last time we had a presentation, you know, we should have, we should have had a heads-up on it, and you are. Once you send a letter to the state, they expect you're going to find a way to fund it, you know?
We'll say. We'll say.
Well, one thing I can say for certain is there's no obligation. So you can say that, you know, that you're, at this point, like was stated, the letter always says pending available funding.
Exactly. Okay, we got a motion in second. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
No, because it's the first I've heard of it.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, so next up, I think we've got Ms. Sarah Jones. Do you want to come on up? Request fund transfers for employee benefits. Are you, Sarah?
I am wonderful.
That's good.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
Great seeing you.
Thanks for having me. You're right, I am here to request a categorical transfer in our FY '21 budget. We are just wrapping up our audit, finalizing all of our FY '21 numbers. We do have some available funds through some cost savings this year, and we wanted to use those funds to put some funding into our OPEB/Mako investment account. We have really limited funds in that account. We only have funded it with $100,000 back in 2016. That investment has earned us $53,000, so we've had a really nice return, and we'd like to start putting some more money away to fund our future OPEB liability. So we are requesting a $500,000 categorical transfer in our budget specifically from the instructional salaries budget line item into our fixed charges line item.
Could you tell the public what that OPEB liability obligation is?
I can. It's $137 million. That obligation, we just had a valuation done this summer. We have a valuation done every summer to meet our generally accepted accounting principles require that we have a valuation done. And our liability grew approximately $20 million from year to year. And the reason that that liability is growing primarily is because interest rates are falling and because we have no assets invested to speak of. So we are in a very different situation from Talbot County. Talbot County, in their valuation, when they go through the same process every year, they have the benefit of having assets invested that are actually earning a return, and they're so much greater in relation to your liability. You end up having the benefit of being able, they use different assumptions, and so we are, have to use an assumption of a, I believe, a 1.92% return on our investments, whereas you're able to use like a 6% or 7% return, I believe, because you actually have assets invested. So there's a lot of sensitivity to some of these assumptions. The assumption, for example, on the interest rate, if it were, if an actual interest rate were to change by 1%, either way, it would have about a $20 million impact on our liability. So it's a soft number, I guess, is the way the actuary explained it to me, that 137 million. He said what we should be maybe a little more focused on is what our annual cost is. We fund our OPEB liability currently as we go. So as we're paying post-retirement health benefits for our retirees, we fund them each year. So our cost has steadily been going down from $2.3 million in 2017 to $1.6 million this past year because we made some plan changes, particularly in our, how we handle prescriptions for our retirees, and we've found a more affordable plan. Saves us money, saves our retirees money. So that's a really good trend. But we need to get money into our trust, so we're hoping that we can use the fact that we had some grants this year that helped us meet some of our operating costs and just had other savings because of the strange operations during COVID, and use some of that surplus to fund our obligation.
So Sarah, this is one of the topics that we did talk about at this Board of Education meeting, to which I refer from a few weeks ago, and I appreciate the fact that you want to, you know, start putting some money away. But one of the questions that I asked, and you were, I think you were going to look into it, now, I understand the interest rate, you know, crazy, about $20 million, but I remember, you know, about, oh, gosh, half a dozen eight years ago or so, that liability was told as $50 million. So anyway, you look at it, in the last, you know, five to 10 years, it has doubled, and that's not because of the interest rate. And I don't remember, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at that and why that liability has increased from, say, $50 million to even, let's call it, a soft $100 million, why it would have changed so drastically?
Right. So I did, actually, I had a meeting with our actuary about that, and honestly, the interest rate is the biggest factor. The other thing is in 2017, we changed, like you changed, accounting principles. So, and I don't remember the accounting principle number previously, but when we were all forced to adopt a new accounting principle, our liability grew from the $50, $60 million that it had been in 2017 to $90 million. So where we're coming over the last five years is from $90 million to $137 million. And again, what the actuary explained to me was that because we don't have actual hard assets other than $100,000 invested and earning money, we have to use a different set of assumptions to figure out how we're going to fund that liability. And it's all very theoretical, I guess is what I would say. Whereas you have, by having more significant assets invested in your account, you have a demonstrated rate of return, and you're able to, I believe you're using something like a 6% or 7% rate. And so you're not falling behind, you're kind of keeping pace with...
Well, the council has made a concerted effort to contribute to our OPEB, and we have encouraged the Board of Education to do so, and they haven't. This is the first, you know, somewhat significant amount, but as long as I've been on the council, we certainly have been looking at whether it's a $50 million liability or a $137 million liability. Like, y'all need to do what, at least attempt to do what the county council has done so that this number isn't so massive. But, so it's not to alarm the public, though, most of us do pay-go, so to speak. Like you just said, $2 point-some million, and it's now $1.6 million, and you do it out of your fixed asset category. So this isn't something that we would really ever be on the hook for, whether it's the county or the school, to say, oh, my gosh, I got to pay $137 million. That's just, you know, that's all of your retirees, if you didn't fund it at all out of current assets over, I don't know how many period of years that would be. So people, I mean, it's alarming, but they shouldn't, you know, completely freak out because we do typically pay for it out of our budget and out, well, and your budget as well.
That's exactly right. Out of the 24 school systems in the state of Maryland, 22 to 23 of them are pay-as-you-go. There's only one that's done any forward funding. So we would like to start doing some forward funding. We've never had fund balance left over at the end of the year to be able to add this as a supplemental item, and we've never put it, built it into our budget.
Well, there has been. I beg to differ. I mean, you've only been here for a year. I mean, I know that there has been, whether it's a small amount, whether it's $20,000 or whether it's a couple hundred thousand dollars, there's always a little bit of fund balance. And we've always encouraged the school system to take whatever little bit is left over and put it in OPEB. And I think this is the first year, other than maybe that $100 grand, that they've chosen to do so, which I do appreciate.
Mm-hmm.
Sarah, you know, $100, we appreciate it. So, you know, it tells a lot about you.
Thanks.
Mr. DeVio?
No, I think that's a great statement, because that was a request from the council to...
Exactly.
And you worked hard to find some money and start funding this, and that's a great step in your short tenure with the school.
Thank you.
Well, future councils and future taxpayers will thank you and us for this fiscally prudent move. Thank you. I can certainly support this.
Okay.
So do we need a motion to make this happen? I will move to authorize the request for the budget transfer request.
Yeah. Okay, we got a motion second. Mr. Pack, do you want to speak?
Sorry.
No, no comment.
Okay, no problem. Okay, we got a motion in second. Call the vote, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
That's good. Very good job. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. We're only an hour and 15 minutes behind. Okay. All right, call the...
I always wonder why we schedule our public hearings for 6:30, no matter how many things are on our agenda ahead of time.
You've got to talk it, so...
No.
All right. That one caught up very good. Mary Kay is here. She's done some great work getting applications straight for the community development block grant. So Mary, Mary Kay, can you, can you explain and go through these grants for us, which you did a phenomenal job of getting some money?
Sure, thank you very much.
Yep.
And it's great to see you today. Pleasure to be back before you in my capacity as grants administrator. So, thank you. In August, the county posted the CDBG application and funding opportunity on our webpage, and we emailed a lot of local nonprofit organizations, and we received five letters of interest. On September 14th, the council voted to move four of those projects forward for funding in the next phase of the application process, with one of those, bam, the Black African-American mines still in the fundraising, fundraising stage. So they were determined that they were ineligible at this time, but they can maybe come back in the future if there's other funding opportunities, and the council will reconsider them for either grant funding or any other opportunity that comes before us. Three of the four selected projects completed the necessary draft application, and the Foundation of Hope chose to withdraw their letter of interest at this time, and they may come back before us again as well in the future. So we're currently asking for the three applications in accordance with the CDBG procedures to have the draft application reviewed during the public hearing today, and then an administrative resolution to be moved forward so that these three projects can be submitted to DHCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, for an application to be reviewed. The three applications include the Polaris Village Ministries, who are seeking $500,000 for building revitalization, and their three main objectives include a food program, a childcare program, and parenting classes. The Chesapeake Multicultural Resource Center, who is seeking $1,028,750 for project administration and to rehabilitate a 12,000-square-foot building that they own on Higgins Street to create a community center and a community garden area. And the third application is Midshore Pro Bono, who is seeking $50,000 to continue providing direct legal assistance to low-to-moderate-income residents of Talbot County, and the funding will support community outreach, education, and legal representation. The final applications are due to DHCD by October 8th, so we're going to continue to work with the agents to finalize the applications, which will be reviewed and scored by DHCD on a competitive basis. So even moving forward with the application today through the county council and with your resolution, it still goes on to their state process and has to be evaluated and determined whether they are eligible for funds. So I believe there are representatives who have been waiting a long time who are here from each of these projects. So if you have additional questions or need more information on a project, I would ask that, you know, we have them come up and provide some more information. But again, thank you very much for your support for these three applications, and we look forward to working with these applicants and trying to get their funding and get their projects moving forward.
Thank you, Mary Kay. Did you mention the Foundation of Hope? Did you mention that?
The Foundation of Hope is the one that they chose to withdraw their letter at this time, so we do not need to introduce that resolution this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so do we open the public hearing? Okay, so, all right, now we want to open a public hearing for comments, so if you want to speak, come on up and give your name and your address, and I'll give you three minutes. And if you're representing, you know, one of these grants, I'll give you five minutes. So we'll start here on the... So we'll start here on the, on the, the left, on my left, on the first row. Second, third, fourth. Okay.
Do we need to read the title in first?
We need to read probably one in its entirety.
Okay.
Have the public hearing first.
We can have the public hearing first, okay.
Okay, all right, good.
Sorry.
Okay, no problem. So here on my right, the first row, sorry, anyone come on out?
Hello?
Good evening. How are you doing?
I appreciate you waiting. It's been a long time. Appreciate you waiting. I appreciate all the help and assistance from Mary and the council. My name is Matthew Peters. Physical address is 7423 Station Road, Newcombe, Maryland, 21653. I am the executive director of the Chesapeake Multicultural Resource Center. And we are asking for $128,750, I believe, in order to renovate an old brick building that we purchased back in 2019, kind of as part of a larger complex at the 331-333 Dover Street. We believe that this is, will be a great improvement to the area, especially in an area that we know needs a lot of revitalization. We have a lot of good momentum in the East End District of Easton with the development of Rise Up Coffees, with the mural, Ride on Rails and Trails, with the Hill Project, with growing number of Hispanic stores and small businesses in the area. We think this is the perfect location to invest into a community center, something that we can use as a training facility, an education assistance facility for English as a second language. We do citizenship classes. We've historically been trying to use school space and other spaces, obviously with, you know, this pandemic that put a burden on so many people in order to give us space. And now we have this opportunity to kind of run and manage our own space safely. And again, I think it will be a well, a good return on investment in terms of being able to engage the community we work with, having interactions with them. We'll have a number of partner agencies, from local government agencies to banks, to Chesapeake College School Systems. And then one organization I work very closely with, Boy Scouts of America. We will use that also as a hub in order to create more opportunities for young people to learn about scouting, have access to camping equipment, and use that as a meeting area in what I think is a community that really needs something that they can gather around to participate in these types of education and community services.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I have a quick, the document before us has a different amount than what we just heard, and the amount that we've heard on the record here is the correct amount?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody in the second row? Okay, how about the third row?
Well, it's finally nice to be here in person.
Glad to have you guys.
I am Derek Daly, president of Polaris Village Ministries.
My name is Jamil Thompson. I'm the head of schools at Polaris Village Academy.
We are requesting $500,000 to help us renovate a historic church on Port Street, 209 Port Street. This church has been sitting there, really a eyesore of that community. We purchased it not too long ago, and we found that, working with RAO Engineering, we were able to come up with a very good plan to turn it into a daycare center and also to create a commercial kitchen that would help us provide food for people that have food insecurity. Our goal is to have, start maybe at 5:00 to 7:00, where anyone in the community can come in, have a meal with us. You come in and have a meal, anyone. Chuck, you can come. Excuse me, Mr. Callahan, you can come. Mrs. Lusher, you can, Mr. DeVille, you can, Ms. Price, I'm hoping to see you there. And you can come and have a meal with us. And what we do is, it'll be free to everyone. And what you can do is, for yourself or anyone else, you can just throw in a little donation to help it keep going. But then it'll allow other people that really are not able to throw in that donation and really need that assistance, they can come in and have a meal and know that they have, at least for seven days a week, during that period of time, they can come in and get a meal with us. From there, in our application, we have a program. It's called the Feed Program. So we're looking to, as they sit down, sit down with them and have a conversation. How's your family doing? What's going on? Do you have any needs? Because we are well-connected, as you know, with Building African American Mines. We're connected with the Multicultural Center. We're connected with the Y. A lot of, Talbot County has a lot of resources out there that we can direct some of the people that might be coming to us so that we can provide services to them. And this would just be a great way. And hopefully, our end result is that they come back. Once they get themselves, you know, together, their feet on the ground, they come back and they help us, and they assist in serving or doing anything else that the ministry would put on. I'm going to let Mr. and Ms. Jamil here talk about the services to children.
So thank you for having me once again. I wanted to just say thank you to Mary. She's been awesome with the whole process. I called her about 15 times during the process. So she's been great. So what we're doing, designed to do, so we have pre-K3 in that particular bill. We want pre-K3 in there, and we want our school in there. But the rationale for pre-K3 is, the earlier you get kids, the better you can serve them, the more academically sound it will be by the time they enter kindergarten.
Can you lean into the microphone just a little bit?
Excuse me. So we want pre-K3 students. So that's what was the idea of the childcare center. And the rationale for that is, the earlier you get students, we all know that the better their outcome should be if you get them earlier. So we figure that if we get them at pre-K3, which is three years old, and we probably get them the foundational skills prior to getting into school, then they'll transition from our pre-K3 program into our pre-K4 program into our kindergarten program to our first grade program.
Question, though.
Yes.
We've got public schools that we fund for pre-K3, for kindergarten and first grade. So, I mean, tell me why? We want, I mean, if they can go to our public school system, I mean, I love, I mean, I love everything that you're doing. But why do we need to have pre-K, kindergarten, and first grade when we have our public school system that accepts those ages?
Great question. And I think that people coming from lower economic statuses should have options as well. I don't think that they have the options that the higher economic status people have.
But that's exactly why we've gone lower in public education, why they've now, doing universal pre-K is so, exactly for that.
But universal pre-K, universal pre-K is not, so for instance, this is example. Right now, the school system is not servicing kids. They shut it down. So what happens to our program? They came over to our program, and now we're servicing them. Right now, the kids aren't being serviced because the head starter, the early program, got shut down. So now, what happens? The kids that's in that community over Port Street don't have anything. So what do we do? We give them the option to do something, to have education, instead of sitting at home, getting, doing nothing. And I believe I just heard you say, prior to, maybe a couple of hours ago, about education and having kids, options for kids to have education.
But our kids are in school right now.
No, not the lower ones, because we got several kids in our program that cannot go to pre-K3 right now or pre-K4. They're at my building right at this moment, getting serviced.
Want to know why they're not in pre-K, but keep going.
They're in pre-K. They're in pre-K with us, right now. And the parents, and you can, the parents' specific words to me was that they shut the program down over here. So they came, asked if we have any options available to them, and we have options. I don't see what's wrong with people having options.
My question is to the Board of Education right now, why they're not getting pre-K, and I need to verify whether that's true or not true. But, I mean, certainly appreciate you doing.
Just to make an additional point to that. We are not trying to replace the school system. We're trying to be an additional resources to the community. So if we, if, like Mr. Thompson said, anyone can send their child to the public school system. What we do that's a specialty, okay, is we focus on individual learning. The school system has to go by, you know, whatever Washington DC says, okay? We don't really agree with that. We want to say, we want the child to learn, especially at that age, how the child learns first. And then, as the child begins to learn, then it could be introduced different learning styles. Perfect example, as an African American male, I went to a predominantly white school, okay? And as they were teaching me, they said, "We think that you have a learning disability." Well, if anyone sees me now, they'll say, "That's ridiculous." But at the time, my parents, both my parents, were from the Caribbean. So I'm a first-generation American, okay? And so the way my parents taught me was different. Has nothing to do with my intelligence, but it was the way that they were trying to teach me, it didn't connect. So I was struggling at the time. When I finally did get caught up or in touch or engaged in understanding how they were trying to teach me, I started moving along. And that's why I became who I am today and why this gentleman next to me, why we are doing this, because we know that at that young age, a child can make it, or a child can just flounder. And it may be a lifetime that that child will never get caught up. And all we're trying to do is provide a service for a child like myself and like him to be able to catch up. And at any time, they can go into the public school system and understand how to learn and move along.
Absolutely. Kids have different learning styles. They have different learning styles at every age. So thank you.
Yeah.
Would you see this as competing with or partnering with the Neighborhood Service Center's after-school program?
Definitely partner. Like, we're not in the business of trying to put anybody out of business or saying that our program is better than, our program is more, is better than another program. What we're trying to do is just be collaborative in the community. And I can give you an example of how we're doing that today, because we have a lot of community partners, Chop Tank Behavior Health, the YMCA. We have EB Yoga. We have a lot of people in the community, in the Eastern community right now that are taking, have active participation in the program. So we're definitely not trying to take over or trying to put anybody out of business. Partnership and collaboration is at the forefront of what we want to do. And we appreciate, and so far, we have been very good at the partnerships, and they have been very good to us.
Also, just to add to that, we're also going, was it the four on, two off? We're off. Tell Mike how far I'm going.
So right now, we, so right now, the program consists of Monday, Wednesday, and Friday is academics, rigorous academics and mathematics, science, social studies, et cetera. And then on Tuesdays and Thursdays, where our community partners come into the program and provide their services. So for example, the YMCA, starting next week on Tuesday, October 5th, is providing swim lessons for the year for our kids. EB Yoga's coming in. We provide self-defense. We have a whole bunch of community partners on Tuesdays and Thursdays that provide services. And what we're doing now is having a back-to-school night on September 30th, where all the partners are coming into the, coming into the school, to the BAM Center. And the parents are coming to meet them, to see who's providing services to their kids, and just to build that relationship and foster that community, community that we want to build. If you look at our mission statement, it says "A Village", and that's what we believe that we need to raise kids, is a village, not just one individual person, not just one individual organization, the community as a whole. So that's where we stand with that, sir.
Can I ask a question, piggybacking on Mr. DeVille's question regarding the Neighborhood Service Center? This site that you have selected, the old church center, exactly what you're talking about, is probably less than 75 yards from the front door of 126 Port Street, where the Neighborhood Service Center is located. Did I hear you say, maybe, I didn't hear clearly, that you're going to open up a food bank also there and serve food? Isn't that going directly, I'm not going to say in competition, but indirectly in line with what the Neighborhood Service Center does with its food pantry? And do we need to set the close proximity of two entities doing the exact same work?
Mr. Pack, we are going to not, we're not a food pantry, and we're not a food bank. We're actually going to be cooking the food as if we are a restaurant. So, and then we're going to be inviting anyone in the community, not just people in need, but anyone in the community to come in and have a meal with us. It's a ministry. So we're hoping that, of course, and the way we're going to market this is that if people, we don't want to make it seem like, you know, we're opening up this food shelter for everyone to come in that needs something. And we're trying to take that stigma away. We want people to be, to come and take a part, take part of the services that are available to them. So we're going to open it up to everyone. We're going to have very, I used to own a restaurant. So anyone who traveled to that restaurant, no, we cook good food. So, you know, I ask anyone to come and, come and just have a meal with us. It's our ministry. And we're hoping that we do get people that have that, that are not able to afford a meal, that they can come and have a meal. And we're hoping that people that can afford a meal, that come and make a donation so that those, it will support those who can't. And that's the village Mr. Thompson was talking about. It takes all of us to get this done. And that's why we're coming in front of you, because we're asking help from you to be a part of what we're trying to do, and we hope that this is something that you're interested in.
Well, I appreciate you clearing that up. Again, I may have heard mistakenly, since I'm not there in person, but what you're saying is that this is not going to be a food pantry within 75 yards of the front door of the Neighborhood Service Center, but it's going to be an on-site kitchen where people can come in, sit down, and have a meal. Of course, that's all governed by the House Department, not by us. So I think with that clarification, I would feel okay with it.
Can I say two more things, please?
Sure.
Also, just to, I want to just make it abundantly clear. And this goes to show that we're not trying to overtake or be, try to take in competition with the school system. Our design of our school is to not have more than 10 kids per classroom. So that's the design. We want to keep it as small and as intimate as possible, because we all know the bigger you get, the less you can do. So for example, we provide social-emotional services to all kids that enter our program. A social worker does virtual services with the kids at home and sees them inside of the school setting. So if we get bigger, then we're not going to be able to provide them type of services for the kids. And I can give you another example. We have a kid that has a speech and language issue. Instead of signing them up for special education and run through the special education process, we partner with a speech and language pathologist in the community. They come in, they provide special education, or speech, not special education service, but speech and language services to the kid, and that's how we do things. We're not, if we get so big, we're not going to be able to do those type of things. So we want to remain relatively small, whether we went up to 12th grade or we go up to just 8th grade, or just the 5th grade, or just the 3rd grade. It will never be a lot of students in the classroom. It will always be 10 students, because we know, if you look at the research, and I'm speaking about research, educational research, you see research, the smaller the class sizes, the more opportunity students have to learn. So that's the, that was the whole metamorphosis of why we wanted to do the school, to have that small... that smaller setting, to have that intimate educational resources for the students, to be able to provide that in abundance. And that's, that's the whole reason for that. And lastly, we also, I forgot to mention, we also partner with the Judy Center. They, we have a great partnership with them. They wanted to come into the program. They even offered to, for us to bring our students over into the Judy Center for any type of services that they may need. So once again, that's just proof, and that's just what I just want to put out there, that we are in the business of helping out, we're in the business of being community-oriented, we're in the business of being collaborators. And lastly, we're in the business of educating kids, and that's all we want to do, and provide kids a great opportunity with everyone else that's providing kids great opportunities in the community already.
And we're currently five to one student-teacher ratio. So it's, this is intense learning for the kids that are selected. It's very intense. And, and so, and it's really to get these kids, by time they, our goal is to get them, and we're, we're very STEM-weighted, heavily STEM-weighted. So our goal is to, to get them to Algebra II by 8th grade. Once they're in Algebra II, we want them to go into the high school taking geometry. Therefore, they are able to get into BC calculus. Then they can go, as everybody, as, as most, most people know, I was, I was very good friends with the late Jim Clark, and he started the Clark School of Engineering at the University of Maryland. And so STEM is really a big deal with, with us.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. I appreciate the great information.
All right. Sorry, I took so much time.
No problem. No problem. Okay. Anybody on, on the fourth row? Still in the public hearing. Okay. In the last row?
I'm tied in.
Yes? Come on up. It's a public hearing.
Hi, I'm.
Neil.
Sandy Brown, Executive Director of Midshore Probono. I didn't realize we were supposed to defend these grants, but very grateful and happy for the opportunity to do so. I know you guys are familiar with our work. We saw this opportunity to continue that work and get funding in cooperation with the county, so we're very happy and actually will be very happy to partner with the other grantees, just learning about them, and already a partner with Chesapeake Multicultural Resource Center. As you know, there are quite a few low and moderate income people who are struggling with civil legal matters. We're here to continue that work, facing lots of struggles to do that. We're asking for a moderate sum of $50,000 just to support our operations, keep our headquarters here in Talbot County. I really should have asked for money for a building, but I didn't think about that, but maybe next time. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Well, good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thanks, Mary Kay. She's been fantastic.
Okay. Mary Kay. Okay.
I, I did just want to make one clarification, because it was asked in regard to the Chesapeake Multicultural Resource Center. Their request has been increased from 20, 125,000 to 128,750.
Okay.
And that's to include $3,750 for project administration. It's 100 hours at 3750, so it's a slight increase in that request so that they have funding for project administration.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Madam, so, so right now, does anybody else want to speak on any of the grants? Okay. So do we want to hold the public hearing? We, we hold that until the closing?
We can close the public hearing, and I just want to make one last point of clarification. Again, thank you to Mary Kay. She's doing a wonderful job as a grants administrator. There are no county funds involved in any of these projects. This is strictly just sponsoring our grant application for community development block grant funds to the state.
Thanks. Thanks, Jess, for just talking about that. So Madam Secretary, would you like to read one of the grants, please?
Administrative resolution, whereas State of Maryland through the Department of Housing and Community Development has solicited applications from eligible jurisdictions to apply for funding under the Maryland Community Development Block Grant CDBG program, and whereas Talbot County is eligible to apply for funds from the Maryland Community Development Block Grant Program through the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, and whereas the Talbot County Council held the required public hearing related to the formulation of the Community Development Block Grant Application on September 28th, 2021, and whereas the Talbot County Council understands and acknowledges that they would be responsible for the completion of grant activities and any corrective actions, including the repayment of funds if necessary. Now therefore be it resolved that the Talbot County Council hereby authorizes the submission of an application for community development block grant funds in the amount of $500,000 for Polaris Village Ministries Building Revitalization located at 209 Port Street, Eastern Maryland, And $128,750 to rehabilitate a building owned by Chesapeake Multicultural Resource Center located on Higgins Street behind 331 East Dover Street, Eastern Maryland, 21601. And $50,000 for Midshore Probono MSPB 8 Southwest Street, Eastern Maryland, 21601. Be it further resolved that the Talbot County Manager is authorized and empowered to execute any and all documents required for the submission of the application, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 28th day of September in the year of our Lord 2021.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Do we need a motion?
Do we need to do them separately, or all as one?
Do we need to do those?
Probably separately. Thank you.
So I'll, I'll move for the administrative resolution for the Polaris Village Ministries.
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
I'm sorry, Ms., which, which one did Mr. Lusher move on?
This, this one is for Polaris Village Ministries.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Aye.
The next one will be Chesapeake Multicultural Resource Center.
I, I will move for that administrative resolution.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion to second. Madam Secretary, Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
And the last one is Midshore Probono.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion to second it. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I look forward to working with the applicants and getting these complete, and we'll be back in touch with you and let you know the result.
Okay. That sounds great. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move it on to the public hearing. Administrative resolution, next series of administrative resolution regarding.
We did that.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Now we're at the presentation of petition.
There we go. Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. Okay. Yep. Thank you, Jess. Okay. Presentation of the petition. Okay. Madam Secretary, would you please read the title of the petition into the record, please?
In the matter of the petition of Lynn Leonhart Milkie et al. for rescission of the unnumbered administrative resolution of the County Council of Talbot County authorizing relocation of the Talbot Boys Statue, which was adopted on September 14th, 2021. The administrative resolution to the Secretary of County Council of Talbot County, under the authority of Section 6B of the Talbot County Rules of Procedure, we the undersigned citizens of Talbot County, Maryland hereby petition the County Council of Talbot County for the following: Let a numbered resolution be adopted substantially in the form and substance attached heretofore as Exhibit A for the purpose of rescinding the aforementioned administrative resolution. And for reasons therefore say, this is necessary to uphold the integrity of Talbot County's legislative system, both as to the substance of and the process for enacting the administrative resolution, as further detailed in materials attached heretofore. Signed by Lynn Leonhart Milkie, W. David Montgomery, and Clive R. Ewing.
Okay. Mr. Park, can you explain the process, please?
Yes. So pursuant to Section 6B of the Council's Rules of Procedure, once the petition has been, once a petition has come in and been presented to the Secretary, it's certified, it's presented to the Council as she has, and the file is maintained. And then pursuant to Section 9 of the rules, the Secretary, as she has, reads the petition by name and title and gives it a number, and then the Council at that point is authorized to take, but is not required to take any specific actuums, as may take any appropriate action. So in this particular instance, the Council is being asked to introduce and then adopt a numbered resolution, and under the Rules of Procedure, any, any member of the Council may direct the county attorney to prepare legislation, and that request would have to come either orally at meeting or in writing with the two others acknowledging that there were requests.
Okay. All right. To the Council?
Question.
Go, go ahead, Mr. Pack.
No, I'll, I'll let Ms. Price do it.
No, my, my, no, my question is, is the request for the same resolution only in numbered form, which is basically what I asked for two weeks ago, is that what, how you read the request?
It is. It's a, it's a, it's a numbered resolution be adopted substantially in the form and substance attached to the petition for the purpose of rescinding the resol, the administrative resolution that was adopted at the last meeting on September 14th.
Mr. Pack, got a question?
Yeah, Mr. Pack, you got a question?
No, Ms., I don't have, I don't have a question. After hearing the attorney, attorney attorney's explanation of the procedural process on this matter, Mr. Chair, I will make a motion that the petition be denied at this time. Again, if any Council member wishes to answer administrative resolution, he or she may do so. I don't feel Council needs to have a petition to address this matter in this, in this fashion. So I will make a motion that the petition be denied at this time.
I thought we were just having discussion, because now the first person to get to make a motion doesn't, nobody else has an opportunity to make a motion. Sorry.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
So what if I had wanted to make a motion to do a numbered resolution? How do we do that?
It was already a motion on the floor.
I thought we were just discussing and asking questions at the moment, but it's like the game show, we have to press the button fast enough.
Okay. So we've got a motion and a second to deny this petition. Discussion?
Well, I would just go back to two weeks ago when I thought that both the resolution that, that I had read into the record and that Mr. DiVillo put forth should have had some type of public hearing. Whether a numbered resolution requires that or not is irrelevant. I think public process was important, is still important, and I certainly would have liked to have seen this resolution go through a public process, especially with information that has, that has come to light. Again, I guess I didn't hit the buzzer fast enough, because I know the way this motion to deny is going to go down. It's been motioned, it's been seconded, it's going to go the same way as the vote did two weeks ago, and once again, the public is going to get shut out of this process. And I wholeheartedly disagree with that.
Motion?
I have nothing.
Yeah, I would agree with Mrs. Price, too. So it's, it's kind of a shame that the public gave the opportunity to do this, and, you know, it's, it's not the right way to go, in my opinion, and I guess we just got to keep moving forward. So we got, we got to shut down.
So.
And Mr. Callahan, I'll, I'll just repeat myself, as I said back on September 14th, as you very well know. You know, we did have ample opportunity to hold public work sessions on this matter, and it was not, it was not, it was not done. So I, I think it's not fair, it's not appropriate, now say that the public is being shut out. So that, I just take issue with that characterization.
Except that there was no resolution on the floor. I mean, we were obviously, every meeting, we have heard from the public, both good, bad, and, you know, in the middle, on this process for the last over a year, you know, year and a half, we have heard on this. We had a public hearing last year on the vote, last July, August, and this was the first resolution that had been put forth. A work session to hear from the public is very different than a public hearing with a resolution on the floor. And the public has had no opportunity to come to us in a public hearing to comment on a resolution or a bill. Last year, it was a bill. It was a, it was a numbered bill, and that was the right way to proceed. And with what we're, what's happening now, an administrative resolution and maybe even a numbered resolution isn't the right way to proceed on something that so many people in the community on both sides are interested in. And again, I will repeat what I said a couple of weeks ago, it doesn't matter which side of the issue that you're on, you deserve to be heard, not just in protest outside, not just, not just in email, but there is a resolution or a bill that's been introduced, and we have a proper public hearing. And, you know, Mr. Pack hit the buzzer before I could, and now it's going to be denied, and I don't know. So Mike, now I have a procedural question. Now, if this vote goes the way I think it's going to go, can I still ask after the fact, or do I not have the opportunity to have, you know, have this as introduced as a numbered resolution? Is, am I, am I shut out of the process now?
I think the Rules of Procedure allow for the, any member of the Council to direct the county attorney to prepare legislation.
To, to rescind this? And if I do that, if, or if some member of the Council does that, does that allow for a public hearing?
There is no requirement of the Rules of Procedure, the resolutions automatically go to a public hearing.
So how, who makes that decision whether or not it is a public hearing? Is it a majority of the Council? Is it the Council President? Or the person that makes the introduction?
I said individual, individual Council, wouldn't it?
Right. So let's say a resolution gets introduced, resolution ABC. Who decides whether it has a public hearing or not?
The rules don't specify that, so I can't say in my time here how that's been handled, because most, I think the resolutions have been warranted, so plain amendments which have hearings is required under state law.
Right. In 11 years, I can't remember a numbered resolution not having a public hearing.
Confused by your question.
And if I, and if I do remember correctly, and I'm, maybe I don't, but, you know, there were members of the Council who said they did not want to meet publicly with the public. They did not want to meet in a public setting. They would meet one-on-one, but they would not meet in a public setting. So again, mischaracterization at this time, say that the public is being shut out, that the public didn't have a chance to speak about this subject in its entirety, is not completely accurate.
I'm talking about a bill or a resolution, Mr. Pack, not a public work session.
I'm talking about the entirety of the subject, not.
Oh, we've heard about the entirety of the subject for the last year and a half when people come, and, and I appreciate them coming and speaking at the end, you know, at the end of our meetings. Absolutely, we've heard from it, and we know that nobody's opinion was going to change. But when there is a bill or a resolution on the floor, I believe in transparency and a public process to come and have your three minutes to speak to the Council in this setting as opposed to just a work session.
Well, as, and the procedures are what they are, the wording of, of our Rules of Procedure, as you all very well know, I have the issue with some of our wording and the ambiguity, but that's another matter for Council to take up at another time as to how we want to go about and do a forensic, a forensic look at our Rules of Procedure. But as it stands right now, Mr. Chairman, there is a motion to second before this Council.
Well, Mr. Pack, I just, I just want to comment, you know, because you commented on, you know, you were offended at what I said. It, it's, it's not that it's what I said, it's what I sort of believe when it comes to the, the public hearing in, in a numbered resolution. That, that's all, that's all I'm saying, that I, I just think we went about it wrong. And this, this, this that was so highly publicized, I, I really think that people should have really been able to speak on it. That, that, that's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, I get it.
You know, so I'm not going to sit here and argue with you that I'm offended you. I mean, we defended a lot of people that didn't get to speak. So, you know, so let's go ahead. And Madam Secretary, let's call the votes.
First, I'd like to say that this, as read into the record, this would be known as petition number 21-02. I had to assign it a number.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Callahan?
No.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
No.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
All right, introduce into a numbered resolution, Madam Secretary, could you introduce the resolution, please?
A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap certain real property located at 24108 Mount Pleasant Road, St. Michael's, Maryland 21663, and shown on Tax Map 32 as parcel 85 from unprogrammed to S1, immediate priority status.
Mr. Callahan, we have Terry Martin and Mike Murkow here this evening.
This is a resolution to amend the Comprehensive Water Sewer Plan to remap the property from unplanned to S1. The resolution has been initiated by the property owner. It was developed by Ray Clark and was improved by the county attorney. So, thank you. As Susan said, the property is located at 24108 Mount Pleasant Road, St. Michael's. And the sewer connection for the property will actually be made when the new sewer service becomes available as a result of the Bonn and Nettet project. If anybody has any other questions, I can answer them.
At this time. Okay, good. Mike?
I think that's it?
That's it.
Actually, just quick. This is a developed or an undeveloped lot at this point? This is a developed lot because only such developed lots are eligible for this reclassification?
There's a house on the lot. It currently, I think, is in poor condition and does not have indoor plumbing. So I think they're trying to, you know, look forward to making it a habitable modern convenience.
That sounds like it's unpleasant currently.
Hey, Mr. Pack, can you say anything? Or did you hear everything?
No, I think everything is in order with this resolution. I'm fine with it.
Okay, okay. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and announce the resolution number in the public hearing, date and time, please?
First, I need to know who's going to introduce it.
I'll introduce it.
Or do we usually raise hands for that, right?
Oh, we do.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
And this will be known as resolution number 309. And the public hearing will be on Tuesday, November 9th, at 6:30 PM.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, next up is the introduction of legislation. Madam Secretary, could you please read the title of the bill in record, please?
A bill to authorize a capital project for the acquisition of certain equipment and an office trailer for the repurposing center located 28128 St. Michael's Road, Easton, Maryland.
Okay, all right. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, and good evening to all Council members.
Joy, could you either remove your mask or pull that microphone real close to you because it's tough to hear through that mask? Real close, please.
Is that better? Okay, great. The bill that has been introduced is to support acquisition of equipment as well as a trailer for the repurposing center. The total amount of the acquisition is $2.6 million?
2.5, rounding.
Yes, thank you.
Madam Secretary, we've got to call the roll, right?
Okay, yes. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay.
This will be known as...
Good job.
This will be known as bill number 1494. And the public hearing will be on Tuesday, October 26, at 6:30 PM.
You sure about that 6:30 time?
Next?
And next we have Ms. Nagel here to request the abatement of real county property taxes. What's yours?
Okay, and I am here tonight to present to Council the annual request to grant abatement of real property taxes for various organizations around the county. All of these nonprofit organizations that are requesting tax credits for fiscal year 2022 have been granted tax credits in prior years. Just to give you some details related to the organizations that are asking for abatement, the Chesapeake Audubon Society's nature centers are requesting abatement for six parcels. Five parcels are at the Pickering Creek Audubon Center and one parcel at the High Banks Marsh. Chesapeake Wildlife Heritage Wildlife Sanctuaries has nine parcels located at Bailey's Neck Farm, Bozeman Field, and the Canterbury Farm. The town of St. Michael's is requesting tax abatement at three locations that are held for future town use. Two of those are on Fremont Street and one is on Talbot Street. Habitat for Humanities is asking for tax abatement for 15 properties held for future home sites. Eight sites are in Easton and seven sites are in St. Michael's. The Neighborhood Service Center asks for tax credit for their South Street property that they're renovating to house three families. The Springfield Cemetery Association is requesting tax abatement for its lot in Easton. The Talbot Agricultural Center has a parcel in Easton that it uses for various volunteer-based activities, including 4H and FFA, and they're asking for tax abatement for that property. Talbot County Government has 11 parcels that are used for Parks, Recreation, and Recreation County Facilities and Public Works. Tuckahoe Steam and Gas Association has two parcels on Route 50 that they are requesting a tax credit for. The Waterfowl Festival asks for tax abatement for its parcel that it's holding for future use. The total of the tax credits are $55,369.69, and it's for 50 parcels.
Are you ready for a motion to approve the abatement for those 50 parcels in an amount of $50,000, rounded?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could we call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Okay, good job. So we're ready for the county manager report?
Okay, Mr. Pepper's coming in. The first is a request from the Department of Parks and Recreation to award bid 21-05 Asphalt Weaving at Easton Point Landing, 1,000 Port Street, Easton, Maryland. Council, as you read in your agenda packet, Parks and Recreation is recommending the award of this bid to the low bidder, Slatons Excavating and Hauling, in the amount of $47,680. A total of seven bids were received. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Pepper.
So Easton Point is one of our busier landings. For a couple of years now, we've had some really bad asphalt down there. There's actually even a sinkhole that started in the front left corner. So this is something that was actually on the... We had applied for this grant last year. It was denied. So we applied for it again, and now it has been approved.
Okay, so we'll go ahead. And then a motion?
Yes.
So moved?
Second. Okay, I got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Thank you.
Council, the next two items on county manager reports are going to be postponed until our next meeting on October 12, when Ray Clark, the county engineer, is back from vacation. And then lastly, I just wanted to make an announcement about the Midshore Household Casualty Waste Day that is going to be held on Saturday, October 30, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the former Hobbs Road landfill located at 26375 Hobbs Road, Udetton. This is being sponsored by Maryland Environmental Service. And it's an opportunity for homeowners to get rid of all sorts of materials from your garage. Great opportunity to get rid of those old pink cans, pesticides, chemicals, all sorts of things. Information about this is on the county website, talbotcountymb.gov. Again, it's being held Saturday, October 30, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Rainer Schein.
Thank you.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. So, we got a public comment? All right, so we'll start with a public comment here.
The public comment is an opportunity for members of the public and attendants to address the Council regarding any county matter. Any member of the public desiring to be heard by the Council shall raise their hand and wait to be recognized by the Council President. Once recognized, the person shall state their name and address and then direct their comments to the Council as a body, not to individual Council members or other members of the public. Each speaker shall be permitted to speak for no more than three minutes. Those speaking on behalf of an organization shall be given up to five minutes unless otherwise authorized by the Council President. Speakers are expected to be courteous and respectful. Personal, impertinent, or slanderous comments shall not be tolerated. And our first person signed up is Wilma Miller of Royal Oak.
Hold on, Ms. Miller.
I thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak tonight. I am not a physician. I do not have an Ivy League education. I am a bedside critical care nurse, and I have been for 24 years. And what I am going to say is going to be even more difficult to hear after what you heard from Dr. McGuire. I would like nothing better to dispute what she has, some of what she has said. I agree with most of what she has said. However, that is not why I'm here. I am here because I have worked bedside since this whole COVID experience, before we knew what COVID was. I am still there. I want to remain there. So I want it said on the record. This has nothing, I'm not speaking against University of Maryland, who is my employer. I am speaking against the mandate. And more importantly, I am speaking against the fact that 200, approximately 250 people will be dismissed from their jobs effective Friday, October 1st, because of a personal health choice. I don't know them. I don't know who they are. But I think everyone should be very, very concerned because I will tell you, nothing much scares me. I've had three teenagers. I'm a nurse. Nothing scares me. Losing my livelihood scares me. And I'm hoping that I won't do that by speaking out tonight. I understand there's a mandate. I understand Maryland will lose their funding, probably, if they don't get a certain number vaccinated. I understand they're not doing this maliciously. But I have a really big concern, big concern. You know, I see the sickest of the sick. And I'm here to tell you just a couple points if you hear nothing else tonight. The vaccine, you're seeing one piece of information here. I don't do kids. I can't speak to kids. You're seeing one piece of information. Mr. DiVillo, I think you asked, what's the percentage? Our county has 38,300 people in it. Right now, 300 are infected. That's 1%. That's one. We need to get the virus out of our heads. We need to get the vaccine out of our heads. And we need to realize, being vaccinated is not going to stop this. This is not a pandemic. This is a political issue. Until we recognize that and do something about it, it will continue. I can tell you a brief story. Three patients admitted to ICU, same day, maybe one the day before. I put lines in all three of those patients. I put a line, two lines, in one of them. One was not vaccinated. One had one shot. One was fully vaccinated. That fully vaccinated patient was the only one that we were able to prone, which means we can put them on their bellies, give the lungs a rest, gives the best chance of recovery. That fully vaccinated patient is the one who died. The other two are still there. One can't be prone because of her size. We're trying to prone another. They are now considered COVID-recovered. I can't tell you if they'll live or die. I can tell you they won't die of COVID. People aren't hearing. People are listening to the media. The media is not portraying this correctly. I don't know how else to say that. I know Dr. McGuire has seen patients at the bedside. I'm here to tell you. See it every day. I see the detriment of the vaccine, every day. I'm not talking once a month. I'm not talking sometimes. I'm talking every single day. And I know this means nothing to you, but D-dimers are higher than I've ever seen. Fibryngin levels are higher than I've ever seen in over 24 years. What that means is, these patients, whether they've had COVID or whether they've had the COVID vaccine, makes no difference. Their clot burden is extreme, extreme. Never seen so many in my entire career. So when she's saying, you know, get that booster shot, she said, Dr. McGuire sat right here and said, "You cannot mount a defense if you are immunocompromised." You cannot. You cannot mount a defense with a vaccine if you're immunocompromised. immunocompromised. Same deal. That's just... That's just... And the other... The other thing I have to say about the issue with the vaccine is, if you think you're protected because you've been vaccinated, you are not. Please take the precaution. You are not. Yes, it's only 1%. But if you're that 1%, that's devastating. If you are that 1%, that is horribly devastating. Take the precaution. I don't know what you guys can do. I don't know if you can do anything about this job situation. The only other thing I have to say is, we have nurses, fully vaccinated nurses, who are out with COVID. And yeah, it's hitting the young people. 37-year-old's been on the vent for two weeks, can't get him off. We... Our issue with beds, whatever, is not COVID. We have four or five, maybe, on any given day. Our COVID unit is open. They have about five. We have a couple in the ICU. I think Thursday, we had literally five in-house. That's not the issue. The issue is staffing. And now, we're going to lose more. Something has to give. We want to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next is Paula Laramore.
Paula Laramore. Yep, come on up.
Hi.
How you doing?
Good. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I wrote down what I wanted to say so that I wouldn't miss anything, because this is new to me. I'm here as an employee of 31 and 1/2 years of our local hospital, 35 if you count the time as my time as a student. I would like to speak briefly about one thing, and that's informed consent as it relates to the COVID vaccine mandate. According to the American Medical Association, and I quote, "Informed consent to medical treatment is fundamental in both ethics and law. Patients have the right to receive information and ask questions about recommended treatments so that they can make well-considered decisions about care." End quote. And so, informed consent is a critical component of our healthcare system. Without it, our patients cannot be an active participant in their own health decisions. With informed consent, they have the right to consent for treatment, but also to refuse treatment based on information that they have received. We, as healthcare workers, are not being given this same fundamental right. We have asked many questions leading up to this very moment without adequate answers to make an informed decision regarding this vaccine. Here are just a few. Some I've asked myself. Some my colleagues have asked. One, how can you tell us that a brand-new vaccine is safe when we don't have six-month, one-year, five-year data to support that? How can you tell us that this vaccine is effective when we are seeing vaccinated individuals getting COVID in the community and ending up in our hospital, as Wilma just told us? Vaccinated individuals are also spreading the virus, as proven by the policy that all healthcare workers, regardless of vaccine status, with direct patient care, have to wear an N95 mask under a surgical mask and eye protection, because they can also spread COVID. We also asked, how many cases are there in our hospital where a worker has given COVID to a patient? How many cases where a patient has given COVID to a worker? The question has not been answered... Excuse me, my mouth is dry. We feel it's because our workers are using universal precautions, which have been a part of healthcare long before I've been in the field for 35 years. So, do these universal precautions work or not? Another question, if vaccinated individuals are also contracting and spreading the virus, which we know they are, why are we being mandated for weekly testing only for the unvaccinated workers or the ones that basically have a medical or religious exemption? This is discrimination based on vaccine status. And finally, why are the concerns from a growing number of doctors, nurses, healthcare workers, virologists, scientists, being ignored? It's being called misinformation. It's being called all sorts of things. Why are our concerns being ignored? When we ask these tough questions, we're just supposed to believe it's safe. And in the words of our governor, Larry Hogan, "Get the damn shot." There are so many more questions that we have. For some reason, suddenly, those of us in medicine and science, who question everything, in our patients' best interests and our own, are being labeled as anti-science. And worse, we're being demonized. I don't know if any of you have the power to speak on our behalf, but I would hope that if you do, you would. Our freedoms and the freedom of everyone in our community are at stake. If this medical tyranny does not end here with us, I fear for our future generations. Thank you for your time.
Jan Greenhawk.
Hello. I'm Jan Greenhawk, 100 Willis Avenue, Oxford, Maryland. First of all, I just want to thank members of the council who asked questions of the county health officer. That was greatly appreciated, because not enough questions are being asked, as you just heard. I had a whole thing written out today, but I don't have to say what I was going to plan to say, because these ladies said it the best. I met with... Not just me, but a lot of us met with a group of nurses for the last three weeks, talking about... And health workers, talking about their plight, that they're going to be fired on October 1st if they don't get the vaccine. And you heard what they said. These are good people who have worked, some of them in Eastern Memorial Hospital, whatever you want to call it, Shore Health Systems, whatever, for over 20 years. They care about their patients. They care about this community. They care about all the people that they work with. And now, they're being let go because they don't want to get a vaccine that they don't see as safe. And nobody seems to care about that. The governor says, "Well, we'll just let nurses graduate early. They don't have to go through all that coursework." Why? We have other governors in other states saying, "Well, let's just bring in foreign nurses to take their place." This is not satisfactory, and you know it. I guarantee you, if Larry Hogan has to go under some kind of treatment, either for his cancer or whatever, he's not going to want a nurse who hasn't been fully trained. But somehow, this is all glossed over, and we're going to lose over 200 employees at Shore Health Systems. And personally, I'm not a nurse. I have nurses in my family. But I'm a person who could be a patient at some point. And for me to think that I might go into a hospital and not be treated by some of these people who have given their heart and soul and their very best to us for all these years is really not just discouraging, it's frightening. And while we're on the subject of the vaccine, very quickly, I'm going to say this. It's interesting that the county health department person never mentioned the VAERS site at all. She mentioned misinformation. But you know, the VAERS site is maintained by the CDC, that group that she referenced so often. And you need to know that after nine months, there have been 701,559 adverse reactions to the vaccine. You need to know that, because that's what these people are saying. We don't trust it. It's not safe. 14,000 people died from it. But I guess the county health departments don't pay attention to the CDC's VAERS website. And you say it's FDA-approved. Okay, it's FDA-approved. So was Accutane. Accutane was on the market for 27 years. You know why they pulled it? The FDA pulled it? They had 7,000 lawsuits over it. That was over 27 years. You have Darvon or Darvocet. I remember when that was around. They pulled that off the market after 2,000 deaths in a 10-year period. Vioxx was pulled after 5.3 years for causing 27,000 heart attacks. I think you get the point of what I'm saying. The data's on their side, but it's more important than that, and you know it is. It's about having people like you were honoring at the beginning of your meeting tonight, people who dedicate their lives to their jobs. And we're just throwing that away because they made a personal health decision. I hope... I know you guys aren't responsible for that, but somebody needs to speak up for these folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Sherri Wilcoxen.
Hello again. Sherri Wilcoxen, Eastern Maryland. I'm going to pivot, but I'm going to add something to that. They said a good bit of what I like to talk about, about the VAERS, the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System.gov is where you can go to it. But y'all were touting the vaccine passports there, the electronic. Just go take a look at what's going on in Australia, where with that little device, and they're being tracked, they can't leave their homes if they're not vaccinated. They can't travel five miles radius. They can't buy alcohol. They can't do anything because they're tracked and monitored. You go look what's happening with that. That's a very dangerous precedent. And I think the United States should go nowhere near it, much less Talbot County promoting it and the Health Department paying for it. So, I was going to read a lot of the injuries, but I think y'all know, y'all understand, I hope you do, how dangerous this vaccine can be. It should not be mandated for anybody. What I want to talk about is transparency. What is going on in Talbot County? Where is the transparency? Mr. Pack is absolutely wrong. We were totally shut out of asking any questions, in particular, about Frank's resolution. I'm going to call it a little sneaky resolution. I did send an email to every member of this council, including Mr. Thomas and everybody else, about asking information. I asked Mr. Thomas, as the attorney, could he please consider this a formal request to provide the below-requested information? And I did not hear back from anybody. In fairness to Mr. Thomas, I do think he tried. I know Mr. DeVio said, "Nope, he doesn't know any of that information." But it's ironic. He stated that he had that information when he read the... His resolution. So, what I want to know and what I want to go on record is, what are the names of the individuals who donated the funds to move the monument? What are the dates of those donations? How much money is allocated to the removal and the repositioning of the monument? Are there any other monies directed from any other source? And if so, who, when, and how much to remove the monument? Additionally, it was said there was an exhaustive search to place the boys in Talbot County. If that's a fact, how come nobody knew about it? And how come within an hour of reaching out, I had multiple people requesting it? Well, how is that the case if that's a factual statement? How was it determined how much it would cost to move the Talbot Boys? Was there an RFP, a public RFP? If so, how come nobody knew about it? It was said that there were donations of $25 to $50 to the fund. If that's so, how come nobody I know knew about it? That something for $25 and $50 donations is usually publicized, and people donate money. It doesn't just happen without anybody knowing anything about it. Something seems very off in Talbot County transparency. And what y'all just did tonight, by denying us to ask those questions again, denying that petition, just stinks to high heavens. And I can't believe this phenomenal county that we live in is doing this. And I can't believe that somebody I campaigned for and voted for is leading this charge. It makes me sad. It makes me upset. And it stuns me that we're doing this without having proper... Proper, proper, public, public comments. Thank you very much.
Dave Stepp.
Hey, good evening, counsel. Dave Stepp from Eastern Maryland. Members of the Talbot County Council, thank you again for your time and attention, as well as for your service to our county and community. I also appreciate your hearing of my concerns at the last county council meeting two weeks ago, back on September 14th. In response to my committed follow-through, I received two responses from members of the council, one of which was a thank you, the other of which involved a bit of dialogue and a commitment to act in the best interests of our county. To that member of the council, I thank you for your intent and follow-through of your word. In my last two addresses to the council, I warned of the looming two-class society due to vaccine mandates. That warning is no longer a warning. It is now a reality that is at the expense of our local healthcare workers in the University of Maryland Shore Regional Health System. As of my last update from those being affected, about 250 healthcare workers are going to lose their jobs three days from now via a forced voluntary separation, which you can probably read between the lines here and realize that's a fancy way of saying, that any resulting unemployment benefit claims will be denied. These folks are the salt of the earth. They are neighbors, friends, and family. They are every bit the heroes that they've been deservingly recognized as. How have we gone from them being hailed as heroes to having to face losing their jobs because of a mandate on what is and should always be a personal health decision? They feel silenced. They feel censored. And their already stressful work environment is nothing short of divisive. Let me not mince words. This is a public health crisis for Talbot County and the entire Midshore. With no action, our health system, which is already overcrowded, will be extremely short-staffed and extremely overworked. Waits to be seen at the emergency room will only get worse than they already are. Elective surgeries will surely be delayed, and times to see a specialist will surely be delayed as well. I urge this council to do whatever you can do to help, whether that be emergency resolution, speaking with other elected and non-elected officials to encourage action against this ridiculous mandate, or whatever else you see fit. I heard all I needed to hear, along with the duty to act, after speaking with a group of nurses, many of which you see behind me here right now, who work at our hospital right down the street. When they were asked, "Why don't you just coordinate a walkout?" Their response was unanimous and instant. We can never do that to our patients. Please remember that it is your primary responsibility as representatives of our county to ensure that the rights and freedoms of all citizens are protected, not just those who aren't our awesome healthcare workers. And thank you again for your time, attention, service, and, most importantly, action.
Mr. President, that brings us to the end of those who have signed up in advance.
Okay, all right. So, is anybody else on the side who'd like to come up, speak? Yeah, come on up.
Good, good. Clive Ewing, Eastern Maryland. Going to high-tech. Easy bringing those papers, but I got it digital this time. Just like you, Chuck. Okay. All right. I'm talking in regards to the Talbot Boys Monument. I do remain exceptionally concerned regarding the lack of transparency to adopt the administrative resolution to relocate the Talbot Boys statue out of state. The manner of how this action was accomplished brings into doubt the legitimacy of the process, which is why I and others have petitioned this council to rescind this administrative resolution. I am baffled why the majority of the council continues to disregard the input of and the questions from so many in the community in this matter. I am baffled why there was even a vote tonight on that, when all that was requested was that a single councilperson instruct the attorney to draft a resolution. I'll humbly submit that that vote was taken out of order. All right? And I ask you all to revisit that. And I think after this meeting, you certainly can direct the attorney to do just that. Okay? There's no doubt there's powerful forces, most if not all, from outside the borders of Talbot County, that have found their way to influence this council. Of course, local councils, like this one, are intended to represent the interests of the actual local citizens, not third parties, not Annapolis politicians, certainly not the well-connected individuals who have chosen Eastern and Talbot County to fulfill their own vision and interpretation of history. I thank the members of this council, who have acted in good faith and resisted the meddling of those who have targeted this county for their latest political or social calls. For the remainder of the council, I certainly hope you will reconsider, if it is truly in the best interests of the community at large, to send this monument out of state. I submit to you that the vast majority of Talbot Countyans believe this monument, dedicated to Talbot County men, must remain in Talbot County. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lynn Milkie, and I live in Eastern Maryland. And what he said. But I do have a legal opinion written by your council dated May 28th, 2021, regarding the similar petition that was presented by Daniel Watson. And it sort of outlines the process, which is that a council member, as Mr. Ewing had said, can introduce a resolution... Can introduce or ask the attorney to write a resolution consistent with the request of the petitioner, which is what we thought we would get a vote on today. Not to be railroaded by an out-of-order motion to not consider the petition. It was wrong. It was the wrong process. I think it was out of order, under Robert's Rules of Order. And I can only think of the saying that democracy dies in darkness while the sun's setting on Talbot County. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in the back here who'd speak? Anybody else in the back here who'd speak? Okay. Yep, come on up.
I'm David Montgomery, I live in Easton, Maryland. I don't want to stay here a minute longer tonight than you do. I would just like to request two things, following on what my friend Lynn Milkie said. The first one is that to ask the county attorney to actually review the letter he sent to Dan Watson, which explains very clearly that when a petition is, when there's a petition to, for, to rescind a resolution, all it takes is for one county, that one county council member, I haven't drunk for, excuse me, all it takes is for one county council member, in an open session or in writing, to ask the county attorney to draft a resolution in form and substance like the petition requested. So I would just like to ask one member of the county council to make that request between now and the next meeting. If not, we will submit the petition again, a new petition for a new number, and ask the same thing, and hope it's dealt with properly procedurally. But maybe we could just move forward. And I'll just point out, since Mrs. Milkie showed me the letter, that the county's attorney opinion was that such a normative resolution always has a public hearing. And I believe that's what I read at the bottom of the letter. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a lady in the back? Nope? Okay.
Counsel comments. Mr. Bellia.
Sure. During our September 14th, 2021 meeting, I inadvertently stated that I engaged in communications and correspondence with the American Battlefield Trust regarding the Talbot Boys Monument. I meant to say that I had been engaged in communications and correspondence with the Shenandoah Valley Battlefields Foundation in Virginia regarding this matter. I have not communicated or corresponded with the American Battlefield Trust regarding this matter, and I sincerely apologize for any confusion my comments may have caused. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bellia. Mr. Lusher.
Yes, thank you. Friday night, I attended both the 10th anniversary celebration of Frederick Douglass Monument, here on the Courthouse Square, a very well-done ceremony, and also Midshore Goes Purple in Ottawa Park, where I had the chance to meet with people in the web of organizations in our community, engaged in addiction prevention, support, and recovery. There, I met a colleague whose son is a recovering addict, whose life has been deeply and permanently impacted by his addiction. I want to recognize Sheriff Joe Gamble for his leadership in Project Purple, which has spread now to many other jurisdictions. I want to thank him for raising the awareness of the devastating impact of opioid addiction and promoting all of that rich source of resources in our community available to help people who are already caught up in it or who are at risk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lusher. Ms. Price.
I have never, in my 11 years, seen people as distraught as they are over the topics that are going on right now. If we can't listen to our healthcare workers, who are there by people's beds every day, and who have had protective gear and they're still spreading it, just goes to show you that these things probably don't work as well as we would hope that they do. And that, you know, to hear things labeled as misinformation when people have different opinions, there is a lot of science out there, and to choose just one side to listen to and label people and their opinions as being misinformed is wrong. We don't know enough about this to mandate the things that are going on. It doesn't mean you're anti-anything. But to label people as bad people because they believe in compromise on a statute, or that it's your own health choice whether or not to get the shot, is just unbelievable to me. And I, you know, the passion that people are coming out here with, and I thank you so much for that, from both sides. I'll repeat a little bit of what I said a couple of weeks ago. To not respect one another, to not appreciate that people have different opinions, and not to hate each other because of it. I've never seen this before, and I am so concerned. Doesn't even begin to describe how people are with one another. So I thank you for coming out. I don't know, I don't think there's anything that we can do. I don't think we can pass a resolution to force the hospital not to let you go voluntary and not even get, you know, what you have coming to you. I don't know what we can do. I just hope that this forum, and this public comment, for people to come out and speak, that the Board of Education listens, that the Shore Health System listens, and that members of this council listen, that there is more than one opinion, there's more than one opinion that's in their own head for everybody. So I thank you for coming out and speaking, and I wish you all the best.
Mr. Pack.
Oh, yes, Mr. Callahan. I'll echo what Mr. Lusher said earlier. I just want to send my thanks out to the, well, congratulations, I should say, to the Frederick Douglass Owner Society on the 10th anniversary of the unveiling of the Douglass Statue here on the Courthouse Green. That event was held on Friday night, and then the rest of the day was held on Saturday, virtually. Also wanted to say congratulations off to our airport manager, Micah, was able to get up to the airport on Saturday. It was a wonderful day, just a clear blue sky, and just a well-laid-out day as far as the different activities he had throughout the airport grounds. So another successful airport day here in Talbot County. The streets were packed with visitors. I think every restaurant that I saw at least had a three tables that were, that were full with patrons. So again, this weekend was a very fun weekend here in Talbot County. Hope you all got a chance to go out and enjoyed a wonderful one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. So I'll sum this up a little bit. First of all, I want to let everybody know that's here, I appreciate it, it's been a long night, and I really appreciate you spending the time with us and waiting to the end of public comments and your comments. And so, first of all, the nurses that are here, I can't thank you guys enough, 27 years, 31 years, I'm sure you're here at least 25 years. I do feel for you. So I look at you guys as sort of angels taking care of people in hearings, okay? So what you don't see, what you don't see, because I'm a firefighter, you don't see them making them mandate their shots, okay? Because they're safe and lives too. So I put you in a position like the firefighters, police officers, stuff like that. So it's really a big deal, and it's a huge problem for you guys to be mandated to take this shot, because I just don't agree with it. I just think they're heading down the wrong road with all that stuff. So it is a complicated problem, and people are dying, okay? I realize that. Unfortunately, one of my workers' wife just passed away last week. I've got three in my business that perhoused. So I take it serious, I really do. But at the end of the day, that's your choice to take that shot, at the end of the day. Like Ms. Price said, I, you know, I'm not sure if we can do anything for you. I wish we could do something tonight to, because I'm sure it's a lot of stress. I mean, somebody's been working for 30 years, and just because they don't want to do something, that means they're gone. I mean, that's a tough situation. And I wouldn't want to be in that situation myself, so I feel for you. I appreciate you being in front of us tonight, because you've dedicated a lot of time and effort here, and all we can be, to work for us and take care of us, and you probably take care of many people's families around here. So we really appreciate it. So, you know, we'll do what we can. Feel free to always come in here and vent to us a little bit, that's what we're here for, that's what this session's for, is for, you know, sometimes it's not all, you know, what you hear, and we can do our best we can, but we're here to listen to you guys, that's for sure. We'll do the best we can with the resources we've got. So like Mr. Pack said, I was at the airshow, it was absolutely phenomenal this weekend, the weather, it was great. Micah did a great job, had a great turnout, there was probably somewhere around 5,000 to 7,000 people there. So it really, really showed Talbot County off really well. So, being that said, Mr. Lusher? Vice President?
Take us out.
Yep.
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 12th, beginning at 6 o'clock PM. The council will be convening an open session at 4:30 PM and immediately adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters, as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. On Tuesday, October 5th, beginning at 5 o'clock PM, the county council will be meeting with elected officials from Easton, Oxford, Queen Anne, St. Michael's, and Trapp. That meeting is open to the public, and will be held in the Wy Oak Room at the Talbot County Community Center, 10028 Ocean Gateway, Easton. And if there's nothing further proper before us, a motion to adjourn would now be in order.
Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion? Second, Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye. See you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
[beep]